Won't allow you to.
Linda's running a few minutes late. Linda's running a few minutes late.
Yeah. Recurring money.
Doing this.
Hopefully, thank me if we actually get.
Feel free to hang out here. We're gonna kick off here in a minute. Feel free to hang out here.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Or if you want to take it behind the scenes is what I'm letting you know now. Whatever you want to do. I'm guessing Linda will be here, I don't know, ten or fifteen minutes. She said she was on the way, so. If you're almost ready, we're about to kick off.
I just got a text from Linda too. She said to tell you. So you must have talked to her.
I got the message.
Good.
I think she'll probably get here by the time we get to three percent.
Okay, good. Yeah, sure to be safe.
Ladies, let me know when we're recording. Okay, tell me when you're ready. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Welcome to the regular city council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please prepare for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly father, we just ask that this evening you would give us, your servants, the ability to deliberate the matters before us with honor to your grace and already just to ask that you would help us to do what is in the best interest of our city and not according to our own will. And we just give this evening to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Members Olson, Berentine.
Here.
Gillett, Martinez.
Happy New Year.
Russell.
President.
Gates.
Here.
And Mayor Jefferson.
Here.
My present and two absences, two absent, me and council members Olson and Gillett.
I have heard from council member Olson that she is en route, so we're expecting her to join us at any moment. Unfortunately, Mayor Pro Tem Gillett is dealing with some health issues. I would ask everybody to keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Moving on to agenda item six, that's the recognition of scheduled public comment. Our first speaker is Inglewood resident Kathleen Bailey. Will address council regarding resrad analysis. I'm sorry, move.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, we're moving on to agenda item five, which is our consideration of minutes of previous session. I'm already off to a great start in 2017. I would entertain a motion at this point?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any changes or comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Records show five ayes.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to agenda item six, recognition of scheduled public comment. And our first speaker again is Inglewood resident Kathleen Bailey addressing council regarding resrad analysis. Good evening, Mrs. Bailey.
Good evening. Tonight I want to get several concerns on record regarding data that may be used or misused or ignored by Inglewood and Integral.
If you wouldn't mind just speaking a little more into the mics, some folks are having trouble in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can you reschedule me?
Yeah, if you would restart your time, please.
I've already taken notes to reduce what I was going to say.
No problem. Whenever you're ready. Are they ready? Okay, go ahead.
Tonight I wanted to get several concerns on record regarding data that may be used or misused or ignored by Inglewood and Integral in their resrad. One, in 2014, the stockpiled sludge years 2011, 12, and 13 were retested. This is a major concern for two reasons. One, dilution was added to the sample prep. And two, the retests reported substantially lower concentrations of uranium, radium, and gross alpha than what was originally reported. If those retest values are used in place of original values or just used in general, Integral's resrad will be invalid. Two, because of the stockpiling, a new contaminated zone parameter will have to be identified and an additional mathematical calculation will have to be done to assess the compounding of the radiation dose exposure resulting from multiple sludge piles over a series of ongoing years. A Google overhead photo can be requested to match the date in the 2014 Arkitus report. Photos of the two, of the 2011, 2012, and 13 sludge piles to help facilitate this and identify location relative to parking lots, driveways, and buildings. Three, if the goal is to accurately identify the radiation dose risk that began with the significant increase in concentrations of radioactive elements in 2009, Integral will start with 2009. If the goal is to minimize the impact that increase in, of that increase, Integral will go back in history to include a majority of sludge years from prior to 2009. Four, Integral should be made aware that employees at the plant consume fruit from fruit trees that actually grow on the plant. And for our historical resrad, there, there was a time when a community garden was allowed to be established on site next to a sludge pile from which employees also consumed food. This requires the activation of additional exposure pathway called plant ingestion to be included in the activated pathways. Please see the attached pathway list that I've given you. Activated pathways should include external gamma inhalation, soil ingestion, plant ingestion, and radon for the decay of uranium. And finally, and again, Ms. Olson is not here, it appears Ms. Olson was not aware that with most scientific analysis, which is what a resrad is, especially analysis results that could face challenges in a code of law, use of the original complete reports from the same source, in this case ACC, is required or at least preferred in order to be able to validate consistent sample handling, sample prep, and review of qualifier reports, none of which is available on the third-party CDM summary report. I had explained this to our group, the possible use of CDM summary report if no longer, if no option existed, but that it was important to pursue the actual ACC 2010 sludge report first, as I have done and continue to do. Last council meeting here, it was determined that the CDM summary report was deemed an acceptable source of the 2010 sludge data, which is great. With this clarified, we again ask that Inglewood and Integral Consulting run the historical resrad on the three years 2009, 10, 11, just as our group originally requested, with equal weight applied to all three years, and use of all radionu- radionuclide sample analysis results from each and all sample sets analyzed for each of those three years. Since a resrad is basically a regression analysis, there should be no data limit regarding use of these sample sets. Thank you.
Thank you. Stick around for just a second, see if council has any questions for you. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, council member Berentine.
Can the ones that you're asking, excuse me, be done without that 2010 report, or are you still required to have that report in order to do these as well?
We have not selected our physicist yet, so I have not been able to ask that question. I've been trying to do it on a basis of what would stand up in court, which is why usually you need consistent data and provable data. If that, it truly is lost and unavailable, then the CDM 2010 summary report would, I would have to verify, may indeed be a, an acceptable source of that radionuclide data. So either way, a resrad will be run. We will run a resrad, but I just want to do proactively instead of, I'll be looking at the product that your people produce. I would rather reduce what I have to tear apart ahead of time and also prevent a false, a really false, small result, which I would then have to explain or would sound too good, nobody would want to listen to, listen to somebody saying it's not correct. So that's the only reason I'm talking about all of this now before Integral completes their resrad.
Did you have an opportunity, I know you were not in attendance at the last city council meeting. Were you able to hear some of the information that was provided about where that was at? Or do you want another update?
What was, I, believe me, I take this whole thing obviously quite seriously, so I did, I did sit there and listen to the whole video of everything I missed last time. It was the first time I missed, so. So I listened to the whole video. I had a briefing, a short, a minor briefing by someone who had did attend from our group. I did hear what Brennan had to say about it being not available and that ACC is not available through ACC, but we don't have any valid evidence that ACC has declared it's not available. That's our final request for verification on that.
Okay, I'm sure we'll get an update about that later than, so you do want a further update on that piece?
Yes, I need, yeah, I prefer if we can get, locate and use the actual original document. That's always the preferred source.
Okay, and then you're looking from something from them, the documents that they're unable to find that?
A declaration one way or the other, because Brennan, in an email back in August, had stated that it existed in hard copy form. He had replaced, he had placed a request into ACC and he was waiting for a response. There, so that was one indication that it may exist. And then the actual protocol that was presented between Chapman and whoever the guy is, I don't remember, Vannacek or something from ACC, and he presented the protocol for the, for the protection of the data on ACC, that the ten-year protocol is, was over my head. It was not clear to me. The, I know that they backup five-year, the five-year backup for in-house availability of the data is cleared out just so they can have room for backup. And then some of the data is stored on a disk and placed in a bank for, a vault for ten years, not a vault day, regular old. I'm sorry, I'm still tired. So I just want clarification, one, on them declaring that, no, they don't have a hard copy as Brennan had indicated. And two, they now keep it for ten years, but they didn't then, or they do have it, they just haven't located it. I want a statement from ACC, not a declaration from Brennan and a conversation between Brennan and CDM.
Okay.
Okay.
Then at least they know now what to address when they address it.
All right.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for coming and speaking this evening, Mrs. Bailey. Our next speaker is Coen Dickerson, addressing council regarding communications. Good evening, Mrs. Dickerson.
My name is Coen Dickerson. I reside at 2835 South Pennsylvania Street in Inglewood, Colorado. I hope the new year, even though an arbitrary and unrealistic new beginning, will prove to be an actual new beginning for the city, that many ordinances will be repealed, that the charter will be amended, that council and staff will employ reason and rational discourse, and that the political infighting will cease. To begin, there is a lot of misunderstanding floating around among staff, between staff and council, and staff and citizens and citizens and council. For instance, council is elected by citizens to represent them, and they are the governing body, which has legislative responsibility. Council employs a city manager who is responsible for administering your decisions and enforcing all the laws and ordinances. You elect the mayor, who represents and coordinates the council. Many of the decisions passed council has made need to be revised, repealed, or defined, especially the charter, which is not to be used as a club to undermine council or individual council members, nor should the city manager nor the city attorney, who are employees of council, should undermine council nor exercise any authority over council. The city manager has expressed his encouragement of staff engagement with council and simultaneously has indicated that his staff have complained to him about council overstepping. And he's also complained about the long-term culture of staff that is hindering his ability to do his job. The city manager does have a very hard job, especially with the undue influence on staff by consultants, former council, and former staff, and the lack of clear responsibilities for his position. This needs to be addressed calmly and rationally. Chapter thirty-two of the charter does need revision. Direction and interference need to be clearly and carefully defined or eliminated altogether. Other chapters need revision. For instance, the city manager in chapter fifty-two is charged with enforcement of the laws and ordinances, yet exercises little control or authority in this regard, as police and staff take direction and advice from the city attorney about which laws and ordinances to enforce or not. Are we to charge the city manager with violation of the charter? Why is, why is there political infighting and public vague accusations about council's violation of the charter and misstatements about the city manager's role? He is an employee of council. He does not run the city. He administers the decisions of council and accounts for them with the assistance of his staff. He and the city attorney are two employees of the council. Fix the confusion between the charter and city manager and city attorney responsibilities. Stop confusing the issues and attend to what matters. Let's look at one instance of an ordinance that is under consideration for repeal or revision, the Title VII residency requirements. This is also an example of council failing to revise or repeal an ordinance that never served a valid purpose and no longer serves a common sense purpose. The police, under the direction of the city attorney, have attempted to evict some fifty to a hundred people who have served their time. If a judge has not imposed upon them any restrictions from children, who are you to impose a postjudicial punishment on people to whom such restriction does not apply? Member Olson said we can compromise. Definition: A settlement of differences by mutual concessions, an agreement reached by adjustment of conflicting or opposing claims, principles, by reciprocal modification demands. Reducing the residency limits is not compromise or mutual concession. It is an arbitrary, unfounded, probably unconstitutional reaction to a false perception of risk as applied to all on the registry, whether violent or pedophiles or not. Council as well as citizens overestimate the frequency of rare occurrences and underestimate the frequency of common occurrences. You wanted to hear from the other side. Look at me. Hear from me. I'm the other side. No residency restriction has protected any child from the biggest threat, friends, family, teachers. And many, if not most, sex offenders are not pedophiles. Either repeal the ordinance or limit application of restrictions to sexually violent offenders. Nothing else makes any sense. Think carefully about your oath of office to defend the Constitution and how it applies to your decisions. Use the tools you have paid for to communicate more rationally. Avoid the evident hubris and anger towards other council members.
Dickerson, if I could get you to conclude your comments, please, in five seconds.
Five seconds. Listen to citizens and each other with open minds and hearts. Make it your personal resolution to represent the best in truth, not the worst of personal illogical agendas.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if we have any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking. Our next speaker is Inglewood resident Robert Elstrom, here to address council regarding excuses. Good evening, Mr. Elstrom.
Good evening. Robert Elstrom, forty-eight twenty South Fox Street. I'll start with my own excuse. I couldn't be here in December. I bit off all the days, but FAA decided I needed to work all the days that you had meetings. I apologize for that. Also, my neighbor Brian, you probably know him by now, he couldn't be here because he has to go to state mandated therapy tonight. Normally, he'd be here if it were a Monday meeting, but he couldn't be here. I had some questions, I guess, in my mind about what kind of excuses it takes to just ignore the Constitution of the United States. You're a body politic, the seven of you, six of you here. That's your only job, really, at the heart of it. At deepest heart of it, you're here to defend the Constitution of the United States. I believe it is quite unconstitutional to deprive people of their homes and move them out. And all I've heard, as opposed to a body politic, is just a series of red herrings, a series of logical fallacies. For some reason, someone along the way, I guess it was Gary Sears, decided that you needed to foment unrest and fear in the council. And now that's been used against you. Heard various council members say, well, gosh, it was a unanimous vote. It must have been very important. Now somehow, in somebody's mind, living one hundred and twenty-two point, one twenty-one point two rods or thirty point three chains or zero point six zero nine six kilometers from schools provided some magical safety web. It doesn't. But now, the latest choice that you've given people is to cut that down to sixty point six zero rods or zero point three zero four eight kilometers or fifteen point one five chains or one point five one five furlongs. This magically is the new distance. And you've sat there and said among yourselves, that sounds good to me. There's a fallacy called the anecdotal fallacy, and it's the one that hurts me the most, and it hurts me the most to hear it coming from you, council member Olson. A person with a PhD who discredited countless, countless researchers. You basically just shat on their research, if I may. What, where is your research? Have you magically done research that says, you know, I believe this one point five one five furlong distance will protect our citizens? A couple of you have used the point that we need to respect the victims. If you take that to its logical conclusion, we need to respect the victims of every crime. I'm pretty sure that if someone's child were run over by a drunk driver in vehicular manslaughter, their life is pretty painful from then on. What must we therefore find all the people who are drunks and get them out of the city? If your goal is truly to protect people, protect them from the people who really represent the risk factors. It's painful to say. I don't even want to think it. You could smirk at me if you'd like, you appear to be. But truthfully, the people who really represent a risk to children are their significant others, people who are close to them. We know that people who are abused, have been sexually abused, are the greatest risk. Would you purport that we find the people who've been abused and somehow segregate them from the rest of society? You're not providing protection. It's mythical. It's magical. There is no magic number. I can't say that, gosh, if only they were one foot further away, if I get the tape measure out. Run it over, run it over to the school. Oh, it's a good thing I live a thousand and one feet away because now I feel that I won't be attracted to some sort of life of danger. Anyway, I had a list of just an infinite number of fallacies. But the biggest one that I see of all here is the one called reification. By discussing this limit, what does it need to be? Is it two thousand feet? Is it one thousand feet? Is it four hundred and seventy-five feet? Is it seventy-nine point six feet? This provides a reification, a reality to this that doesn't exist at all. None of it makes a difference. Not one bit of it. So either you're going to be honest with yourselves, or you're not going to be honest with yourselves. That's all I ask. Thanks.
Thank you. See if, Mr. Elstrom, see if any questions from council for you. Seeing none this evening, I'll thank you for coming and speaking. Our next item is agenda item number seven, recognition of unscheduled public comment. We do have two speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Susan Walker, here to speak about Title VII, and on deck is Mr. Doug Cohn. I apologize. Agenda item six D, Elaine Holtz is not present this evening, so I went ahead and skipped to seven there.
Good evening. Susan Walker. Victims are safer when those who have offended have stable housing and jobs and have pro-social support from family, friends, and neighbors. I've probably said that twenty-five or thirty times since I've been coming here, but somehow it doesn't, doesn't seem to connect. Residency restrictions, whether three hundred, three thousand feet, two thousand feet, one thousand feet, all are arbitrary. Do not keep people safe. The research is overwhelming. We have no control over the eighty percent of offenders who have not been caught and convicted. Those are family members, parents, uncles, priests, teachers, coaches, who are offending at this very moment, but we don't know who they are, and children may never tell us who they are. Just to let you know, I am talking with Jill Levinson, Dr. Jill Levinson, about the possibility of being available to do a presentation for the council. She's been on vacation and the university is just now starting back up, and so I'm hoping to actually be able to, you know, to find something out about whether, about her availability fairly, fairly quickly. I wanted to share with you tonight something that every time I hear it on the radio really touches my heart. It's a song called Forgiveness by Matthew West, for those of you who listen to K-Love. I just want to say a couple of verses from, from this song. "It's the hardest thing to give away and the last thing on your mind today. It always goes to those who don't deserve. It's the opposite of how you feel when the pain they caused is just too real. Take everything you have to say the word forgiveness, forgiveness. It flies in the face of all your pride. It moves away the mad inside. It's always anger's own worst enemy." This is the part that I really like. "Even if the jury and the judge say you've got a right to hold a grudge, it's the whisper in your ear saying, set it free, forgiveness. Show me how to love the unlovable. Show me how to reach the unreachable. Help me now to do the impossible, forgiveness." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if council has any questions for you. Ma'am, we do have a question for you, Mrs. Walker. Council member Berentine.
You contacted the, was that the gal that was named the last time that? This doctor?
Jill Levinson.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
She was the one that you, that council member Olson had suggested bringing in if we did the forum or for the forum that we're planning?
Yes, I believe so. Yes.
Okay, along with, I assume, some other people, so are we waiting for that to get a date?
If we, if we did.
Did you contact anybody in the city about it?
I, I have talked to the city manager and, and let him know that, that we're trying to arrange something with her. But because she's been on vacation during her school break, I don't have anything definitive at this point, so.
Okay, so I assume that's why I haven't heard back on a date from my town hall yet. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Doug Cohn, speaking about the topic of historical preservation. Good evening, Mr. Cohn.
Good evening, council, city manager. I have three things tonight. First of all, Happy New Year. May this be a really good one. Second, I wanted to say thank you for considering the Historic Society for some of the cash from the, into other agencies. And third, the city ditch. It's been in conversation now off and on for quite a long time. Wanted to tell you the short version of the story. Wanted to tell you the short version of the story of the City Ditch. It runs from Littleton all the way through Inglewood, past Washington Park to City Park in Denver. Tom Skerritt, whose house is right over here on Banock Street, built his house there because that was going to be the path of the ditch. The gold rush started here in Inglewood in 1858, and within a year, 100,000 people had moved into the Denver area basin. Miners and businessmen and people planted farms. Denver was a dry and dusty place, except for right along the river. Water was needed on the flatlands above the river. That was the reason for the ditch. It had several names, the Big Ditch, the Platte Ditch, the Platte Canal, Smith's Ditch. It was, it was named the City Ditch in 1882. It was begun in 1860 by the Capital Hydraulic Company, but they laid out the plan with an insufficient drop, so the, the water couldn't get all the way. In 1861, Denver businessman John W. Smith took over the project, and working with a surveyor, Richard Little, who was also a farmer in Littleton, and Littleton's named after him, they reset the, the stakes and figured out the right angle to have the ditch work. When they finished the ditch in 1867, it was more than 20 miles long and irrigated thousands of acres of, of the benchland. John Smith owned a big fire where Washington Park is right now. The Smith Lake was named after him. Now, the ditch went through Washington Park, then Capitol Hill, and ended up over in Denver City Park. It was called an engineering marvel, because it was one of the first times that in urban areas, they used just groundy to, to feed the water to where they needed it. As we walk along and drive across the little ditch here, it's a really important piece of our Inglewood history. There weren't very many Inglewood people who had rights on the ditch. Tom Skerritt was one who actually bought water from the ditch. And I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you for that, sir. Let's see if we have any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Cohn, for coming and speaking. Council response to public comment. Would anybody like to kick us off? I do have some response here. Thank you, Mrs. Bailey, for coming and speaking this evening. I would ask staff perhaps to give an update on, you know, last meeting, we heard that the 2010, was it the 2010 report? Yeah, the 2010 report, of course. Original, we could not find, the ACZ report. What is our plan of attack to deal with this issue, since we were, found out we were unable to do that?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask, actually ask our Utilities Director, Tom Brennan, to come up and address that, that issue. I know some of the discussion did transpire at last meeting about utilizing the data that we have in, in a combined report that CDM Smith has given us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
As of now, we do not have the 2010 report, and there is not a clear path forward. I believe we've exhausted all avenues.
Thank you. It sounds like we are going to make some attempt, though, to regenerate this report and run the RESRAD from '09 to '11, as folks have suggested, or is that, is that part of the plan here?
Right now, all the information we had was submitted to Integral on the 29th of December. I'm waiting to hear back from them exactly how we're going to approach it.
Thank you. Is it possible to get some communication, some memorializing the missing ACZ report from CDM? Is that a reasonable request?
That has been provided in previous requests.
Okay, so we do have something from CDM?
It's from ACZ.
I'm sorry, from ACZ detailing the missing report, or the fact that it was missing and they were unable to recover it?
It, it details their retention policy.
Policy, okay. Is it possible to get something from them that just memorializes the fact that we attempted to recover this data through them and it was unsuccessful?
Yes, I can check with them.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Thank you for sticking around answering questions. I think that's all I had on that. I'd allow, since Mr. Brennan has so gracefully stepped forward, if any other council members have any questions regarding this, feel free to jump in. Councilmember Berndtine.
The mayor asked if we were going to be doing, running the RESRAD on that, and I'm not sure that you gave a clear answer on that. You said all of the information has been submitted, but not whether they were doing that.
You mean, are they going to use the 2010 summary? I am not certain yet.
Perhaps we'll hear an update on that, two weeks from today, after you've had an opportunity to sort of powwow with them and, and figure out exactly what can happen, or what is reasonable here?
They're going through all the data right now that we submitted to them.
Okay, so if, the three questions that Kathleen Bailey asked, if she submits those to you, if she can submit that through council, and then you can answer those? That she wanted confirmation on three different things. Maybe I haven't remembered them accurately enough to memorialize it here, so if she submits that to council, then they can forward that on to you, and you can go ahead and answer those questions or give a response?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Brennan, appreciate that. To Mrs. Dickerson and Mr. Elstrom and Mrs. Walker, who came and talked about Title VII issues, appreciate your comments, and looking forward to the public hearing on this matter that we've set for February, I believe, correct? I do agree that we need some modification, if not repeal, but I'm waiting to hear some additional testimony on this issue and see if we gather any additional input. Mrs. Dickerson also brought up an interesting issue of charter issues and council policy. I appreciate some of those comments. I, you know, started to think that perhaps there might be some opportunity for some charter cleanup in this next year. I don't know if council would be open to that kind of idea, but perhaps there could be some committee or subcommittee of council, or even council study session, where we could go through and perhaps think about some charter revisions or some cleanups in future years. Also, of course, we do need to kind of loop back around to council policy. I'll discuss that a little bit, I think, later in some of my mayor choice, a little bit later this evening, but appreciate those comments, and thank you, Mr. Cohn, for sharing another wonderful story. Councilmember Berndtine.
Kathleen, I appreciate you coming. I assume that you can, I would be grateful if you would give the questions that you had, what you want the confirmation on, if you'd submit that to council, as you have done some of your information previously, and I'm sure City Manager Keck will go ahead and forward that on for response, so that we have the confirmation. I can understand that you want some validation, verification from the other entities, saying that they don't have that information or the steps that they've taken for that. That's not unreasonable. To Doug, I'm sorry you didn't have enough time. You're going to have to learn to talk fast. You might want to talk to Coen, because she's pretty good at that. But I want to know whether we end up getting water in Inglewood, so I, I would like to hear the rest of that. And I'm sorry you weren't able to get a little bit more information, keep trying on the U-Hills, the hilltop that just got torn down, aside from the, the big brawl of whatever for the junior high that apparently everybody remembers. Must have been quite the mayhem, so I think it's got, hopefully it's got a little bit more history, since you said it was built in the mid-'30s. To Susan Walker and Robert Elstrom, you, you are correct. I have appreciated the plethora of information we've gotten on the recidivism rates of sexual offenders and other criminals as well, and have come to understand that they have a lower recidivism rate, and that's all well and good, but that is not the issue that is before this council. The issue that is before this council and that ordinance is whether or not a restriction, a residency restriction protects anybody. To the state, I have yet to find any information, or be presented with any information, that any residency restrictions, any limits, any footage is of some magic number to have, provide any kind of protection whatsoever. Aside from political feel-good, it isn't a reality. I appreciate what you've said. And I'm waiting still, if anybody does have it. If 2,000 feet is an arbitrary number, then I guess 1,000 feet is too, to your point. So we are still looking at that, but that is the issue that's before this council, not whether sexual offense is bad offense, it is. Not whether criminals are difficult to have in a community and bring back in. It is difficult for the community, but whether restricting them further protects or adds any additional protection to this community has not been something that's been provided yet. I'm still waiting for that information. Maybe if we have the forum, we can dive into that a little bit more and get some more of the fallacies either proved or understood as fallacies. So I appreciate you coming with the information. Coen, I don't know if you were here when we had the last study session. I think it must have been the last study session that we had, where there was some concerns about violations of the charter, if there were violations of the charter. I have sat on a council before. I've talked to a lot of other council people in other cities, and the way that that is interpreted is up to the council. We are the body that makes the decision of how the law and policies are implemented, not the employees. You are correct. And we are going to be going over that information, as we discussed, with the new city attorney. This council is not of one mind on the exact implementation of what an interference is. And since I sat on council before, it was handled differently then. So if we are going to make a decision as a council, that the implementation of that is up to whoever's the, employed as the city manager at the time, then we need to come up with that decision and decide that the city manager gets to decide how that looks to him. My reading of it right now is that that's a decision that has to be made by council, and we are not of one mind on how that looks right now. What I suggested as a city, the study session, was we wait until the new city attorney comes, have some legal advice on that, and then have a discussion as a council, and then make a decision, have a policy, and have it equally distributed, equally adhered to by all of the council members, so that we know what we're talking about, not subjective, not subjectively enforced, depending on the political whims. So that's where I believe it stands right now, is that we're waiting for the new city attorney to come. And then we'll go over all our policies and procedures, and maybe even dive into a little bit of some of the charter, I suppose. I mean, so we'll see, but your point is well taken. I appreciate, I think some of it's a little overreaching, but it's well taken, and I appreciate you coming and presenting it. That's all I had.
Thank you. Move on to Agenda Item Eight, Communications, Proclamations, and Appointments. No items there this evening, so we're going to move on to Agenda Item Nine, that is our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Well, there is comments.
Sorry, Councilmember Russell?
Can we pull nine C2?
Nine C2?
The biogas use application.
Yes, and that is resolution or motion, so that is going to be 11C4 now in my mind? Thank you. Councilmember Berndtine, did you have something, too?
No, it was on the same issue.
Thank you. We will now be going back to the remainder of the consent agenda items. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Votes have been cast. What the record shows, six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, no public hearing items this evening. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 11, Ordinance Resolution and Motions. Under Resolutions and Motions, Item C, we have 11C1, Staff Recommending Council Approved by Motion the Advanced Utility Systems CIS Infinity Upgrade in the Amount of $95,375. Our staff source is Utilities Director, Mr. Tom Brennan. Good evening, Director Brennan.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. I'm before you this evening to recommend approval by motion of a contract with Advanced Utility Systems in the amount of $95,375 for the upgrade of our current CIS Infinity billing software. CIS Infinity software manages all the data required to produce quarterly and annually water, sewer, storm, and concrete utility billing, as well as billing for five sanitary sewer, outside sanitary sewer districts. We generate over 100,000 bills, bill statements annually, with over $27 million in collections. Version four will improve the comprehensive functionality of the software by allowing automation of repeat, repetitive tasks, such as sewer and permit generation, as well as simplifying data transfer from our automatic meter-reading system. The user interfaced will also, will be easier to use and navigate between screens for our billing staff. Also, version four will allow our IT staff, instead of advanced utilities, to make changes as new requirements emerge, such as rate changes. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Councilmember Russell?
Have we had rate changes recently?
No.
And so are we planning to do that?
Right now, the one is, we're looking at sewer and stormwater.
So is this something that we've been planning to do at this time? Do we normally upgrade it on a regular basis, or?
We upgrade as the versions come out, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Berndtine?
When was the last version?
Version three, I believe, was 2010.
Do you know when the one before that was?
No, I do not.
Other questions from council? At this point, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move if we can.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 11C2, Staff Recommends Council Approve a Resolution to Declare Its Intent to Reimbursement Spending of Geo-Bond Proceeds According, Prior to Actual Selling of the Bonds. Our staff source this evening, supposed to be Finance Administrative Services Director Kathleen Wrinkle, however, Mr. Keck does not resemble her. She has been out, and we'd like to keep her in our thoughts and prayers, but our staff source this evening is going to be City Manager, Mr. Eric Keck.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. As you're aware, you affirmed the notion of putting an election issue, ballot issue TC on the ballot for the November election. That did pass. As a result of that, now we're trying to move forward with the issuance of bonds or the selling of bonds. You've also approved a contract with Stiefel Nicholas and Company to be your underwriter for the city to do the sale of bonds. This particular resolution, which was put together by Tom Pelts of Kootak Rock, who is the underwriter counsel, the city for the bond issuance, this would allow the city to actually go ahead and not lose momentum with work that needs to be done to determine the scope, size of the building, as well as preparation for the sale of bonds, including working with rating agencies such as Standard and Poor's, Moody's and Fitch. We may have expenses that, that are incurred as a part of that particular process. This particular resolution would allow the city to recoup that through the sale of the bonds. So in other words, we wouldn't have to be utilizing general obligation funds, or general debt funds, out of our reserves to pay for that particular work. This would allow us to be reimbursed for that within a 60-day period. So 60 days from the date of passage of this, we'd be able to, again, recoup those expenses related to the police building and its construction. So it's a fairly simple instrument that's been placed and put together. Some of the activities have been enunciated within this particular staff report. Just as I mentioned again, it would allow for us to recoup cost of architectural work that's being done, design work, project management related to this particular project, and again, anything related to the sale of bonds within that 60-day window, which most likely will transpire, as we'll talk a little bit more about at our study session on the 23rd of this month. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Does this change any part of the resolution in the ballot, in the ballot wording? Does it change anything? Did we cover this in the ballot itself?
Actually, this is, this, it is covered in that. This particular instrument, again, like I said, was written by our Bond Counsel, who also helped us to put the ballot language together. As you recall, this was actually going to be entertained last fall, and the council decided not to do that until such time as the people had spoken through the election. And now we've reined in the timeframe for recoupment of cost. And so this, this now is coming forward at this point in time. coming forward at this point in time, and it does not have any impact on the ballot language itself that was approved by the public.
Okay. And also, we're still limited to the 27 million, right?
Correct.
These expenses will be included in that 27 million?
That is accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from council? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Further discussion? I'm very supportive of this. I will be voting yes. I appreciate City Manager's Office proceeding with this and trying to get some of our ducks in a row to make sure that we get the best deal we can. Looking forward to our next study session where we'll be able to kind of look at the timeline and some of the scope of work sort of issues. So thank you again for your efforts. Councilmember Wilson?
I wanted to thank you and other folks in the Finance Department and those that have been helping us from outside. You've done a lot of work, really in a very short period of time, we know, on this. And I think it's very exciting. Our citizens voted for this, and it's the first time in a while that they've asked for, you know, been willing to subject themselves to this kind of thinking, and I appreciate how you helped us with this. I don't think we could have done it without your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you. It's a team effort, for sure.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Without further comment, I'll ask, please vote.
Rita made the motion. Could I have the second, please?
Who is the seconding party?
Steve.
It was Mr. Yates?
Steve, thank you. Votes have been cast. The record shows, six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to 11C3. Staff recommends council approve by motion a contract with Slate Communications for $73,450 for marketing and communications professional services. Our staff source this evening is Communications Manager, Ms. Allison Carney. Good evening. Yeah, I know that council will probably have a fairly substantial amount of discussion or questions regarding this. My suggestion is that we start with staff and allow some presentation and questions and answers. The Slate representatives, I believe, are in the audience here this evening. Thank you for being here. Perhaps then I would ask them to come up and allow an opportunity for question and answers. And then finally, given some of the questions at our last meeting regarding the state of the city issue, I'd like to make a very brief presentation and answer any questions regarding that finally before we move on to a vote. So with that in mind?
Okay, so I'll start with the presentation?
No, please. We're starting with your presentation.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll start with the background. I know in the past year, council's goal-setting sessions, communications and marketing came out as a priority for you all. So with that said, staff worked with Kahoots Communication for part of last year and did a 3D process outlining areas for communications that we needed work on. So I know Kahoots came and presented to council, and council gave consensus to move forward with some of their recommendations. And with that said, on October 3 of the past year, council approved the formation of a new communications department for the city. Going along with that, in November, the communications department issued an RFP, looking for communications firm to help with the following, which is the creation of a new Inglewood magazine, the creation of a new Inglewood signature event, a citywide marketing plan and sponsorship package, and assistance in developing strategies for Parks, Rec. and Library Communications. So knowing that this was one of council's priorities in 2016, we budgeted in 2017 for the following. The Inglewood magazine will be coming from the Citizen Newsletter, which we are stopping. Our last one will be the March, April of this year, and the Parks and Rec. Activity Guide. And we're going to combine the two and make additions to create the Inglewood magazine. The Inglewood events in the state of the city are all budgeted out of the Communications Office Events Budget, and both of those items, we're hoping to offset some of the with sponsorships, which will be a new thing for us this year. And the marketing campaign is budgeted for in the Communications Office, and Parks and Library Support is coming from Parks and Rec. Budget. So I'm just going to go over the timeframe a little bit for some of these new items. The contract that you're, that you have before you tonight is for one year, so all the work will be completed in 2017. The events, the holiday event obviously would be at the end of this year in the next holiday season. And the new event, we don't know what that would be. We would get with council probably at a study session and get some input on ideas for a signature event for Inglewood. The state of the city is projected to happen in the first quarter of this year. The marketing campaign, we hope to finalize by the end of the first quarter, and that would continue throughout the year. And the magazine, the first issue is planned for May, and we would have three issues in that first year. I would also like to draw your attention to page 3 of Schedule A that was in your packet. For the 4th of July event, it read $5,000, but it's actually $10,000, and that doesn't adjust your, the total. That 73,4 is, hasn't included that 10,000. So it's just an error on our part. It doesn't change any of the figures in that chart on your last page or the total. And the 10,000, as you know, has historically been the cost for us for professional services in creating the 4th of July event every year. So that's it for the presentation.
Thank you. I'd ask for council questions for staff at this time. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you for this presentation. That was very helpful. I did have a question on that budget item, so thank you for clearing that up. I also have a question about if this communication plan includes a redesign of the website. I didn't see it listed in here specifically, but I thought that's on kind of the.
That is on our, yeah, that's on our radar, and that is with Vision, which is the internet company we've been using since 2006. And in the, I think it was last, last February, the contract was approved for the redesign. That has been turned over to the IT director, and it's moving along. She said today by the second quarter, the redesign should be done. So that's, that is happening, but it's completely separate from this contract.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Verantine?
Yes, thank you for the additional information. I'm surprised that this PowerPoint wasn't provided in our information. That would have been hopeful. When did you have an opportunity to do this?
The PowerPoint?
Mm-hmm.
Last week and today. I'm recovering from strep throat, so that's what I got for my Christmas present this year. So I'm a little bit more behind than I would like to be, but we finalized it this morning.
Okay. And then, of course, this will have to be included as part of the documentation.
On the website.
Yeah, since it's, it really should be part of our material that was presented. But you said that the people were here from the company? I mean, I see two people that look really familiar there. I didn't know they were with Slate Communications.
Yeah, they were with Slate.
Okay. And they were the ones who did, they were, we worked with them before on?
Ooh, sorry, the logo and the branding guidelines.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
I have a number of questions, I think, but thanks for all of this. So it's for a one-year contract, right? Do we think that we will take this on then the following year? Or will we, will we be training staff to be able to handle the kind?
The plan would be, once everything's in place, then staff would take over.
And is there, I'm, is there a process that they could use with us to make sure that we glean from all their knowledge through this whole thing, so that we can basically plagiarize them in the next year? No, take their brains. I'm just wondering if there's some formalized way to?
I see Mr. Robinson.
Make sure we keep learning from the year from it, so that we can implement similar kinds of things following year.
Absolutely, ma'am. Point of clarity there is, I think some of the elements we'll be able to absorb. I don't think all of the elements we'll be able to absorb. So I think this year will be a great learning year for us to see what can we absorb in terms of what they do for us, and then we can reevaluate with you all at the end of this year to say, okay, hey, so the magazine was looking good. You know, maybe we can do more of the events ourselves, you know. But I do think it would be, it would be great if we could do all this in-house, but I want to make sure that we don't put our, put our cart before the horse.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, because as I wondered, there's a chunk of money there that we're using for this this year. I assume it could be available unless we decide to downsize our budget by that amount the next year. And then what are we going to do? Are we going to hire another person? What kind of expertise? And could we develop, do some cross-training of people in the, in the departments already that could be doing this and just haven't been tapped for that yet? So that's.
Sure. I do want to point, do a point of clarity, too. One reason that we did decide to go with a firm is because for the amount of what it would cost to hire one person, we get five.
Right.
So that, that has been a huge plus for us.
You get a lot of comparison to other cities they've worked with and folks that they've done. So it's a great, it's a great option for us. I, let's see, number, gosh, what is this? Number five, under the description of the work and deliverables, I have a bunch of questions, or a few. I don't know. Under number two, it says Slate will create a theme in subsequent campaign that reintroduces Inglewood to the community. So there's this deliverable there. What will be our role in this? And I'd like to know how we will have input into representing the different kinds of constituents that I think each of us has in our areas and perhaps citywide, to make sure they're incorporated. I know we have a lot from the first time around, but I wouldn't want to continue to rely on that data alone.
Absolutely. And I would invite Slate to comment on this as well. I think you all's input is paramount. As we continue to look creatively on how we can promote the city, I believe that your vision and your direction on how we do that and what those themes would be, would have to be ran by you before we continue.
So I don't want to slow up the process for any of that, but I want to make sure that we do have input along the way. So touch points where we can keep doing short spurts of input from people, what looks good, what doesn't, what feels like us, what doesn't, what's helpful. And then, under the, the next, under C, create an annual promotional benefit program for city events and publications. I'm not sure, what is that, what does that look like? Creating?
So I think that's just the sponsorship package?
Oh, okay. So it would be creating an ongoing sponsorship package that you could take out for any event over time?
If they just get it for the year instead of by event.
Okay.
So it would be a whole package.
I'm sorry. I have a lot of questions. I liked this. I kind of got excited about it. Under three, the room numeral three then under that, it's under B, the Slate shall consult, I can't even read this thing because the way it, how will they work with all of these or interface? So yeah, with the Museum of Outdoor Arts, Hampden Hall Attractions, concerts, golf events, everything. How does that get coordinated? How will they be able to interface with all them? And what will be the process of utilizing, again, that expertise in an ongoing manner? I mean, are you going to be having lots of team meetings with these folks from all these different, to kind of do a coordinated effort? It's a lot of work for NOSA to do.
It is a lot of work. Luckily, they know our city and they know our facilities and our programs really well. I think that will help. I think this is also just an overview of, are we missing an opportunity? And do we have something right under our nose that we're not taking advantage of? That type of thing. We obviously haven't met and started to plan and program this yet, since the contract is not approved. So I'm not sure if, if a lot of meetings with these groups will be happening, but.
Oh, it's going to work. Okay. I'd be interested in knowing along the way what we do with that. I can skip the one on the state of the city, because I think the mayor's going to address that in a bit. Not at the council member time, right, during this, right?
No, yes.
Yeah, okay. I have a couple of questions on the payment. The, there's a, it's blank next to printing and distribution.
Oh, yes. Sorry, I meant to touch on that in the presentation. We, that, it will be, that's budgeted completely separate from their contract.
Okay.
So we don't know, you know, we'll go out and, and get the best prices that we can. We don't know what that will be. And then we are, like I said, we're also hoping to offset some of those costs with sponsors.
And then the citizen won't be going out anymore, so we take revenue from that, right? And I can't remember, I know we talked about the magazine at some point. What's, can you remind us why a magazine is so much better than this ongoing? What I'm worried about is losing the citizen, which has a six-week life of information and going to something that's less often, seems like it limits our communication abilities. I mean, in a city that doesn't always use technology, our older population doesn't anyway as much. So what are we going to do to make that work differently?
Well, that's a good question. This, this was actually a recommendation from Kahoots. I think they presented it to you at the study session, and everybody thought it was a good idea, and, and everybody was excited about it. As far as?
I think I asked questions about that one, because I'm really nervous about limiting the numbers of touch points with their citizens.
I think Murphy's jumping in.
I mean, I think there must be other cities that have, that it's worked.
Sure. Actually, we, we looked at a lot of data when it came to this. It is, it is a change, and it is a cultural change. But I will say that we look forward to making sure that these magazines have more depth, have a lot more communication from the city. You know, we got feedback actually from citizens that the citizen, no pun intended, is more talking about what we do internally. And they want to not only hear about what other businesses are doing, what citizens are doing, but also what we do for them as a city. And I think it's also an opportunity for citizens to get involved with the city in a way they haven't before. And so this, this is a trend that's happening with cities, and I think it'll look a lot more professional, and I think it will bring a different light to our city than, that we haven't seen before. But I agree with you, ma'am, that it is different.
Yeah, well, it's different, but I'm more, I don't care that it's different, and I like that it might look different and have a different feel. I am worried about, we have high readership of the citizen. That's what I'm worried about. And our city, I mean, there's an older population that's used to that, getting their information not by our website, which could be really quick and easy. But, so I'm worried about that. And I guess if we do it for a year and it doesn't work, we can always go back to something different. But I wish it was more often, I guess is what I'm, tone down the, maybe pull back a bit on the glossiness of it, or whatever we're going to do and make it more often. That's what I'm worried about. And then I wondered what the deadlines, when will we start filling in the deliverable deadlines? There are some in there, but there are others. Is that just in a process that you're going through still?
Yeah, I think this will be determined once we start meeting.
Okay. It'll be a communication team with them, the city manager, or it's?
I will definitely be a part, and Allison, as the communication manager, will be leading the project and running the project with Slate. But all of us will be a huge part, including yourselves, on what these items are going to look like, as well as, you know, with, and I think with the Inglewood, the new Inglewood magazine, as we, as we projected, three issues would be good. If we determine, and I think Slate has told us, if we determine when we are able to start meeting after this contract is signed, you know what? Four actually is what we need to do. We can, we can make that happen. I believe they said within the budget that we have here for professional services. It's really on the printing cost for us, which I believe we can afford either one, so.
In one of our national citizen, what's NCIS or whatever, the inventory that we did, was over 80, something like 87% of our citizens read the news letter. I think that's huge, and that's what I, that's what I'm worried about. Not, not the idea of this or the concept and the newness. It's that constant, see, we can throw stuff in there that's really, like the police station, we were trying to pull that through, like some of the other items that we just need more timely, quick, it's not that quick. It's six weeks, or is it eight? I don't know. But I worry about three times. I just do. So I don't know if we maybe need to come up with something else with this. I don't know. I'm just, that's my own, that's my biggest concern about all this. I love it. I want to see us move forward on almost all of it.
We will, I will guarantee that, we will, I will write that down. We'll make sure that that's a major point of discussion when we start.
I don't know if anybody else has that fear of having the more come, more often.
We could stick to the questions first, and then we come back to it. Maybe some more discussion on some issues that have been raised.
I think that is, yeah, I think the last one is on the publishing stuff, and that's the same one. So a number of times, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Linda actually covered a lot of the questions that I had. And so the additional cost, I mean, the $73,400 is what we will pay Slate, but we will also end up paying for the mailing of the other thing.
Yes.
And I have some concerns. I mean, I'm really excited about this. And like Councilmember Olson said, I was really excited with Kahoots' presentation. We have not had a We have not had a presentation by Slate. And I really feel like there is a lot of information here. I know that we want to move forward, but I just really feel like we need a study session on this information. Because I am concerned about the citizen also. It, the readership is very high. And, um, if we change it, some people might not even realize that it's the city publication, especially the older population. But, um, I'm concerned about that, I'm concerned about the money we've already spent on Kahoots. I think we have spent a lot of money on the communication piece, so, um, I don't really have any more questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that I am very excited about this plan. I was excited what Kahoots came forward with as well. And I'm excited that we're going to be working with Slate again. I think the research that you guys have done in our community is going to give you a real advantage, um, as far as implementation goes with this, so I'm really excited about that. I'm also excited about the idea of a magazine. I think it might be different, but I understand council member Olson's concerns about the regularity of it. Is there, do we have anything planned for the, the last version of the citizen to let folks know that this is going to be the last?
Yeah, the front, the article, the front cover article is going to be on that. And to kind of stay tuned and watch, watch for this.
Okay. And then, just another question, I guess just for us internally, how often are we going to be updated on the progress of this? Like, once a month, or as things happen, or as needed, or TVD?
We, that can be determined by you. Um, I'm already, I am already planning to give you an update, the first study session of every month, um, on upcoming events, so that we could tie, uh, just a general communications update into that.
Perfect. And then, I guess we need to get on our study session list pretty quick, a study session for us to talk about the next potential event on the list, because this, we need to determine that, and so we need to probably get that in our schedule pretty quick.
Further questions for staff? Councilmember Berentone?
I don't know whether we're, I mean, Linda made a lot of observations that I'd like to address, but I don't think there's specific questions for Allison, so I'm not sure whether we're in the question period or...
We're still in the question period here. I'd like to stick with questions for staff, then again, questions for Slate, and then again, a brief presentation from me and question and answer on the state of the city. Councilmember Olson.
Just one last, picking up on council members Martinez's thing of having, Allison having you speak, you're going to speak every month to us already and including that, and maybe we could have Slate do updates when it, with some kinds of things at times that are appropriate. If there's something that needs...
I'll speak for them, yes, they will do that.
I know that, I don't want to take more time for other things that they're trying to do, but I, I think it would be nice to have them.
Sure.
At times, so...
Councilmember Russell, more questions for staff?
Um, I do have a question. So, once this is passed, then, uh, council really doesn't have any responsibility with this at all, is that correct? Meaning, we will get updates, but we have no more responsibility and no more control of what goes on?
Well, I think with the events, we definitely would be coming back to you at different study sessions to get input and help figure those out. As far as responsibility, I see a hand.
So, I would say that it doesn't stop here. I believe that once this is passed, when we talk about the magazine, when we talk about how we're going to implement some of these items and what they're going to look like, we're going to come to you in a study session for consensus. Because we want to make sure that it represents the kind of material and the kind of vision and look that you want for the, for the citizens. And so, we will be coming, as, as Allison said, we'll be making sure that we come to you with updates as well as seeking consensus from you. Hey, this is kind of what it's going to look like, this is what it's going to entail, these are the kind of articles, are you okay with that? And then, I can't wait to hear your ideas, because I, I think that you all will be valuable in saying, hey, this is how we like to see this, not only just the magazine, but the events look, so...
Further questions for staff? Seeing now, I'd invite representative from Slate up, if we have any questions for Slate at this time, from council.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, council, it's good to see some of you again and nice to meet others of you. Thanks for having us here. I won't take up time because it sounds like you have a whole lot of questions for me, but I will say that we are very excited to be back in Inglewood and look forward to helping you better connect with your residents and continue to, to share the Inglewood story and the Inglewood brand. As you may know, Slate is a marketing communications firm based out of Fort Collins, Colorado. We actually work almost primarily exclusively with local governments and communities. So, this is what we do. We are, have the opportunity to work with communities throughout Colorado, both big and small, and take some of the learnings that we have from there and of course, apply them to what you're trying to accomplish. Before we get too far into it, I do want to say, one of the things I thought was so valuable when we did the branding process was your engagement and feedback. And so, I, I believe that as we move forward, it's critical that we talk to you and that we hear from you and that we engage with you, so that whatever communication we're producing is truly reflective, not of one person, not of one council member, but of the community as a whole. And, um, that was a big learning for us when we did the brand process. We are so grateful that you gave us ridiculous amounts of time on your agendas to come and talk to you, and we're hoping that we can have that same sort of relationship this time. Our job is to support Allison and her work in really trying to better communicate with your residents. And, um, so through her, we hope that we can channel all of your energy and ideas into, into, as I said before, better connecting with your residents.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
Um, just some of the specifics of the contract, of course, that's been discussed with some of the questions that have been brought up. And that's what contracts are for, is to have the specifics of what the expectations are, who's responsible, the chain of command you're supposed to go through, who gives approvals. And some of those have been brought up and I think would, that they're legitimate concerns and they would really need to be in the contract, some of the stuff that's been brought up. I saw you guys shaking your head that you'd communicate more, you know, I mean, things like, it might be simple, but when we have a, an amount of money on there for the, the Fourth of July is five thousand, it needs to be in the contract that it's ten thousand. It's, it, it needs to be in there. Whether it changes the end result amount or not, the fact that it was split out, was split out for a reason for these events. And, um, I think, I don't think it's that difficult considering we've been in the business of publishing and distributing to the entire city, to get the amounts of what it would take to publish a magazine and do that so that we would have a better idea of exactly what this contract would be. If we're going to do a theme, like what council member Olson said, and, and there's a concern from council that we wouldn't want it, maybe a little bit more council input. But, the contract says that it's approved by the city manager's office, so I, I think some of those things, we might need to make some little tweaking, some adjustments to some of these, but you don't, I saw you shaking your head, so I guess you didn't have an objection to any of the concerns that got brought up.
Absolutely not. We are more than happy to come and share updates with you. I can tell you a little bit about how our processes work and if they match with what your expectations are, great. If not, we can tweak them. What we like to do for each of the elements that you see on the contract, we create work plans. And each one of those have tasks and items and deadlines that we manage to keep us within scope and to keep us on, on time and on task. We'll manage that. We have two other folks from Slate here that I didn't have the opportunity to introduce. Kristin Knoll, who's our communications manager and who will be our primary point of contact for this contract. And also Ryan Burke, who's our creative director and one of the co-founders of Slate. I don't even know if I introduced myself, I'm Kim Newcomer. I also am a Slate CEO and one of the founders. But, we do, um, as part of our process, manage those work plans per project to help us ensure that we are keeping on track and on budget. What we can do, and if you'd like us to do, and this is up to the folks here today, we can go through and actually work through some of those work plans and therefore have some more solid deadlines and check in dates, if possible. Again, what I don't want to do is burden you with too much information, but I absolutely am nodding my head, because I think it is important that we come and keep you updated and that we hear your opinions and thoughts. And so, if we need to take some time to write that into an addendum or a contract, I'm absolutely open to that.
Well, part of that was what council member Russell had brought up before, and I saw you shaking your head, that there's an awful lot of information here, and I believe council member Olson touched on that as well. And it would have been nice to have had this presented as a study session to exact, to see exactly what we were buying into, where the contract seems a little vaguer than I'm, I mean, if, obviously you have more information available about what you're planning to do, but it's, it's not reflected here. And that's the contract that we're being asked to approve tonight. So, I just have those concerns about it. The rest of the conversation would be about what council member Olson brought up about doing this kind of thing, the timeliness and the, the accessibility of it is probably, that's not your decision. You've given a contract based on what you were asked to do, so that'll be discussed with somebody, somebody else. But, I brought up what I needed to with you.
Thank you. Further questions for Slate? Councilmember Olson?
Are we on, we're on questions?
We're on questions for Slate, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm going to hold it then.
Okay. Further questions for Slate? Thank you for being here this evening and willing to answer our questions. Please stick around for a minute, we might have more. Um, you know, at this time, I'd like to move on to the state of the city. Um, you know, I do have just a few comments regarding that and, and some information I can provide to council. I appreciated the staff report, you know, highlighting that we discussed this during goal setting, as well as a couple of times or thereafter. You know, I think that some of the timing of this contract coming forward, I think, was concerning to some council members at our last meeting. And, you know, after having an opportunity to kind of reflect on that, I realized that the change of direction from working with Kahoots to issuing a new RFP and finding a new vendor here is what sort of caused, I think, some of that delay. But, again, I just wanted to tell you some of my thoughts, maybe the who, what, when, where, why of, of the state of the city. Of course, this is a first-time event for us, and so, we're sort of trying to invent, invent the wheel. And so, I hope the council can kind of indulge me in, in trying to understand and highlight a new process for us that we can all kind of get behind. Because I think that really is the goal of this, is to try to make this a, a city-wide event, communicate with our constituents better, provide some points of pride for our community and vision for the future, and ultimately build relationships within our community and turn some folks who are active in our community, either stakeholders or leaders, into real advocates for us. I think that us as a council, staff as, as staff, understands what we're doing and, and why it makes sense and, and what our vision is. But, I'm not so sure that we're as effective as we could be at communicating that to the public. And so, I feel that there's a real opportunity here to plug that gap. And I do feel like my role as mayor, that fits within my job description and something that I think that I should be helping lead us in, into. As far as the who, in my mind, the main audience here is both business and residents. You know, we, you know, we want to do, you know, my thought was, we were going to do an invitation, but really, it's really open to the public. You know, some of the folks that we thought about inviting, I worked with Allison to try to come up with a little bit of a list of potential invitees and, you know, just a real broad idea of what some of that looks like, you know, a couple of tickets for each of our top fifty businesses or top fifty employers, board and commissions, you know, other elected officials in the area, regionally as well as within the city, Board of Education, those type of things, our, a local Chamber of Commerce. Also, you know, considering leaving additional invitations for council members so that they can use some discretion as far as who they would like to see in our, in our audience that evening. As far as where, we, we did consider some venues, citywide, but we really think that's, you know, I really think that city center is the right location, not only because it's centrally located, accessible parking, but also because of its capacity. We looked at the capacity of Hamden Hall, Hamden Hall's capacity is just over three hundred. And, I apologize, you don't have to stand for this entire thing if you don't want to. I was just realizing, but, you know, we realized that Hamden Hall's capacity is just over three hundred. You know, we're, our intent here is to not exclude anybody. My thought is if we got more than three hundred folks who wanted to come and hear about what the city's doing, that would be a smashing success. And so, you know, my thought was that we would do the presentation in Hamden Hall, but the event would really encompass the entire second floor. We did talk about some potential spillover, if we had more capacity than Hamden Hall could, we could potentially provide additional venue in the community room for viewing of the presentation and those type of things. But, that's, you know, how we kind of came up with the city center as the potential venue for the where. As far as what, you know, again, this is a, in my mind, an evening event, you know, again, we talked last time about February twenty-second, which is the last Wednesday of the month, from six to eight P.M., with a pre and post-reception, about a thirty-minute presentation. I envisioned some partners and sponsors being there, including the Museum of Outdoor Arts to provide some, you know, to be opened so that folks can check out that display and make it a kind of all-encompassing for the second floor and, and use some of that space and, and make it a unique event. Partnering with some local music providers, you know, for some sort of classical, I think we reached out to Eric Birdeleuzi to try to find somebody there. We also want to partner with some local food vendors who could sponsor some of our nicer restaurants in town and highlight some of our local businesses, ask them to give away some food in, in exchange for a sponsorship of the event. Um, you know, ideally, the timing of this event, I was really thinking that, you know, I really wanted this earlier. Unfortunately, with some of the timeline issues I just brought up, I, I really think that this needs to happen by the, the end of the first quarter of 2017. In my mind, that's a critical timeframe for our council and for our term. Our term, of course, is a two-year term as a council. We're past the midway point of that, and I feel like if we go any further than the beginning of the first quarter of 2017, we're really looking at a hindsight or rearview mirror type of presentation. And, and while I think that reviewing where we've been is very important, I think that the other big part of this is where we're going. I've worked with the city manager on the scope of, you know, what would really be required for this event. I've worked with the city manager's office on a brief outline that I would like to disseminate to council. As well as a very brief guest list, again, it's really just kind of like I just described, top fifty businesses. We haven't, I don't think, delved down to figuring out, you know, all of their addresses and things, but, you know, those, of course, we do have their contact information, those are generally licensed. At this point, you know, I guess I would like to get some feedback, you know, answer any questions. You know, the real goal here, I think, is, is to be inclusive. I, I really would like the broad support of the council here. You know, in hindsight, I think that, you know, I could admit that there should, should have probably been some more council involvement, you know. And however, you know, our last meeting was really the first time that any of that concern was really addressed or, or brought to my attention. And, you know, I guess I would just appreciate in the future, if we've got some issues, let's bring them up and, and discuss them as we move along. You know, my concern again is with the timing. You know, I'm happy to get feedback and, and get everybody involved in this. I, I have a little concern though, because I don't think that we need to get consensus on every issue that I've just kind of went over. And so, you know, while I think a study session is a possibility, I would prefer to move this forward, you know, to try to keep this moving. One of the ideas I had perhaps was a subcommittee, you know, that could perhaps meet with Slate in conjunction with me and staff so that there could be some additional input or an implementation of a special meeting or special study session. Finally, you know, I think they did a great job. I was going to highlight some of the scope of work, but honestly, I think we've done a really good job covering that. And so, at this point, I guess I would like to open it up to council for questions or feedback, just generally, and where we think we can take this issue. Councilmember Olson?
Um, if you're intending to be inclusive, I can appreciate that, it's just quite late, given the amount of work you've already told us you've been doing on this. I didn't have any idea to bring it up until I started to figure out that there was something going on. So, um, it's hard to know what to bring up when you don't know you should be bringing something up. I had, I think I said last time that I really thought this was going to be a sort of a joint effort, I guess I was wrong about that. And I think it should be, and I would like to table this part of our decision tonight and say, let's do a study session and talk about this that evening, whenever, I, I won't be there February twenty-second, I've had something planned since August that I have to be leading that night, so, um, yeah. So, I would really appreciate having a council kind of study session on it together.
Thank you. You're saying you didn't know to bring it up, or you're suggesting that we didn't?
I didn't know you were this far down the...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just give me a moment, you know, I apologize. And I apologize for last time. I think I, you know, we went a little bit too much back and forth on it. If you don't mind, I'd just like to address what you just did and then allow you an opportunity to do the same. You know, again, you were just saying that you didn't know to bring it up, and I guess I just wonder why, when, you know, we discussed it during the goal setting, we've also discussed it, you know, multiple times since then. Did you feel like there was just, please explain?
I made an assumption that when we talked about it as something we were gonna do, it was something we would do. When you talk about we, you talk about you, not we. So I think that's the difference. Yes, you talked the whole, this whole time about we did this, we did that, and I don't, the we is, I guess, the other folks and not us. And so I made an assumption, and we know what assumptions do to us. It did that to me on this. I don't know if anybody else thought to bring it up. I, it just, it wasn't something on our agenda, it wasn't on a study session that we were doing it, and it wasn't on my mind until I read The Citizen, and then I was gone, teaching a class for two weeks, and I, and nobody brought it up and anything in between that I listened to, and so I brought it up. So that's why I did. And I still think I would like to see this moved to a study session and have a conversation about what do we really want a state-of-the-city event to look like. That's what I would like to see happen tonight.
Do you feel like we're incapable of having that conversation this evening?
It's not that we're not incapable. I don't think we have all the information, and I'd like to have a study session on it.
What information would you like to see?
I would like to have a conversation as a brainstorm, as in brainstorming. That's what I would like to have. And maybe if you, it sounds like you have some very specific ways you want this to go that evening. Who and, and why did you choose a certain way? It sounds like it's gonna be a lot of presentation by whom? You or others?
Yes, ma'am, by me.
By you? Okay, so this is your, sort of the mayor's state of the, so were you at the Denver one just recently or this fall?
I was not, no.
Okay. So that helps know that it's really the state of the city by the mayor's presentation. And that would not be the event I would have come up with for us, so there you have it. So I'd like to have a brainstorming session, maybe everybody else wants it that way. That's fine. I can be a minor in my voting.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantine?
I have to share Councilmember Olson's concern on this. This is way more in-depth than I had even envisioned in what we had discussed before as well. And to push this much information tonight, I think is, is a bit much. I mean, you're, you're, when you originally asked, Loretta, I'd like to take your Inglewood citizen spot to do a state-of-the-city thing. I thought it was going to be just a presentation, kind of your, here's the good and bad and what we're working on kind of thing that would, could be done in an article. I had no idea until just now how absolutely involved this is. And to try and push this kind of huge event and do this by February 22nd, I think, is a bit much. And would, and I would like to, I would suggest that we have a study session on it. I would have liked to have had this information previously as well, and it might have given me at least a clue that this was a much bigger event than what I had envisioned in my head. I certainly know that you had brought it up with the city manager before. I stated that at the last city council meeting, that why should people be surprised you brought it up? But now that I see what you think that looks like, you know, it's a much different elephant than I had even envisioned you discussing, and I do think that that would mean that we should have a talk about it. I, I think that this entire contract needs to be talked about in study session for what we're doing. The council member request that got put in for what Kahoots had done and what was going on was that the Fourth of July, and it says her from Murphy Robinson, was, even for Kahoots, was only $6,000. We are not historically, to my understanding, doling out $10,000 to a planner for Fourth of July every year. That's just not true. So when we're, we need to have a little bit more information about exactly what's been done and just not make anecdotal things. We've got a presentation, a PowerPoint being presented to us tonight that's not part of this. And then this, it makes a difference. We need to have that information. I pulled this because I wanted to know exactly what Kahoots had done and how much we had, a foundation we had put off for that. They were, they were, after being paid $47,000, of which we never got to see a contract or what they were supposed to be doing and what the end results and how much we could use and what are we putting in place. And we were supposedly paying Kahoots with the same 1.5 FTE, the, all this kind of moving things around to pay for stuff.
If you don't mind, Councilmember Barantine, can we just stick to the state-of-the-city issue and we can come back around to maybe some?
What was the stated issue? Because I thought we were...
State-of-the-city issue.
Oh, I didn't, okay, that's not what she said, but, okay, we'll piecemeal it. No, I think to that, thanks. No, because now is the time to talk about the entire thing. I do not agree.
You don't want to pull one?
I do not agree with her, with wanting to pull the state-of-the-city out of this, when I'm telling you I believe that there are other issues going on with this contract as a whole. We're, we're professionals. We're supposed to be voting on a contract, not piecemealing something together, anecdotally having people answer questions and say things on that podium that are not in this contract. When she asks whether the city council will have some input on the theme, that is not the contract that we're looking at. It says the city manager's office will. So we either understand when we vote on a contract that it's the whole contract, and we shouldn't be trying to answer questions here that are not memorialized in that document, that we need to take some time and redo it and revisit it. I may be for doing this communications piece of it, but when I look at the timeline of it and how it went through with Kahoots and them being terminated and what's left of their product and what we're using and where we're going with this, and then we're creating departments and study sessions and moving forward, we need to slow down and figure out how we're spending this money so that we know what's accountable. And the next council that comes in four years later, if they look at this contract, they know exactly what was supposed to be done and what was paid for, not have to go back and listen to the tape.
Thank you. Before I move on to Mr. Robinson, I know he's got something sort of interject here. I would like to just highlight perhaps that, you know, you know, that I view this state-of-the-city as an extension probably of the monthly meetings I've been having since, since being elected. And, you know, we, I go through that every month, and I present concepts and ideas about, again, what we're doing and where we've been, you know, without council approval or consent. And so, you know, I guess I'm just trying to work with you guys on trying to figure out, where is that line and how can we work together to try to get, get a vision that we can work with?
I misunderstood. I didn't think it was a debate back and forth from us. I heard the presentation that she made.
It isn't, ma'am. I apologize. You don't have the floor right now. Please give me an opportunity to finish, and then I'm gonna go to Mr. Robinson. If you'd like to key back in, we can come back around. We've got several council members who are on deck and waiting here patiently. Mr. Robinson, let's go to you.
Thank you, sir. Just a point of clarification to something Ms. Barantine, or Councilmember Barantine said, was we have paid a, a event planner every year for the last three or four years, $10,000. Her name is Carol Hiller. That was before my time. We solicited her contract again last year, so that is the exact same. The $6,000 you see there were for the giveaways that we gave to all the citizens, and this, this was one of them. The pins that we gave, the, the little carabiners that we gave, as well as staff and council member polos. All of that was ordered in one order so that we could get that, the swag, should I say, for the Fourth of July, for a city giveaway as, as they usually do.
And that's my point. If we had done this during a study session, that information could have been answered because obviously now we're up to $16,000 for this last Fourth of July. If we paid a consultant and we did $6,000 for giveaway, I would like to have all of the information about what we're spending for events so that we can make an apples-to-apples comparison on what we're doing with this contract.
So ma'am, we were, we were actually upwards of $85,000 for last Fourth of July, and I came to council for that. And so, but...
I don't want it answered here.
Sorry, ma'am, let's give Mr. Robinson the floor.
I just wanna clarify, in terms of professional services, $10,000 is what we've paid.
Okay. And I don't...
Councilmember Barantine, please, you do not have the floor. Please, please light back in. We've got other members who are being patient here. Councilmember Gates?
Actually, I think...
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Good. I think in the best interest of trying to keep a little bit of harmony here, this really needs to go to a study session.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I'm also in support of a study session. I have a lot of questions that I think could be answered during a study session. And seeing, like the other council members, seeing what you've already put together and planned, I think is pretty far advanced based on what we had thought had already taken place. So I think it would be good to have us involved. I think a good, healthy brainstorming session with all of us would be great. I think seven brains are better than one. We'll come up with other ideas and, and so we can work together on that. A couple of the questions I have, I guess, in advance of a study session, if we're gonna do that, is how do you want the council to be involved in this event or just audience members? Either way? And then how do we plan on notifying or inviting the citizens and businesses? How are we gonna get that out to folks? And I thought I heard you say something about you'll have some kind of physical ticket to give us. So is it like a invite-only type event where we have a couple and we get to pick who we invite? And then you also mentioned sponsors. MOA already agreed to be a sponsor?
Let's take them one at a time. Why don't you start from the beginning? I apologize, I wasn't writing them down. Can you go through?
And we don't, I mean, I guess...
No, I'd love to address, I'd love to address them now.
Unless we're gonna do a study session.
I'd love to address them now. Give me an opportunity. Please give me the first question again. Excuse me?
I guess my point, what I said earlier, is that it was seeming as if we were saying our piece and having our concerns, and then, then we were having a debate back and forth.
No, ma'am. As I, as I highlighted at the very beginning of this, we were gonna go through staff question and answer. This is the state-of-the-city question and answer with me at this time.
Oh, so you're not gonna answer all of our questions? You're only going to address the one for the state-of-the-city? Because it seems that we're setting up a debate forum, then you're answering everybody back and forth, and maybe other people would like to have debated back before this?
Again, I'm not attempting to have a debate. I'm just attempting to answer council's questions at this time.
I'm just letting you know it appears that way.
Gather feedback on the state-of-the-city issue. Again, that's what I thought I highlighted at the very beginning, and that's what I think I'm honoring at this point. Councilmember Martinez, if you don't mind, please repeat your question so I can get those answered.
Sure. Well, one thing on here, on the outline you shared with us, the renovation, and I'm sure the folks out in the audience don't have this, but recent innovation and accomplishments. The bottom one is police building plans and timeline. I think if we're gonna include that, we should also include the new elementary schools building and timeline that's in the plan. Also, I want, I'd like to know how council will be involved in this event?
You know, I envision council being actively involved. You know, I guess I was envisioning doing the presentation myself, but I think that I would, I really want to have all council members' support and engagement at the event itself to meet with stakeholders and leaders. You know, I envision that, you know, as a result of this event, that there'll probably be a lot of interaction.
So you're imagining like us just kind of greet people in the pre and post-reception, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, I think they have, I think there's an active engagement in, you know, feedback on the process itself, creating an invite list, as well as being there that night, of course.
Okay. Well, I guess let's skip to the invite list, then. How are we gonna put that together? I think, are we not gonna invite all citizens?
No, I think it's open to the, my envision is that it would be open to the public, but that there would be invitations given and mailed out to specific folks.
So then how, I guess, two questions. And how would all of the general public know that this event is taking place and that they're able to come? And then how are we gonna put together the, I guess, VIP list or whatever you're thinking?
So we'll advertise this event, just like we normally do, through all available channels that we have, our website, our, you know, citizen newsletter, all these, all these type of things that we can get out there, as long as we have adequate time to do that. And that's a little bit of a concern, given the, the timeline crunch here, I think. I'm sorry, what was the other piece of that question?
I guess how are we gonna put together the list of folks you want to invite?
You know, I think it's, we all add on to the list as much as we want and then figure out if we need to reel that back in. Once we determine how big that list is, again, my thought is a target of about, you know, 300 or less. And again, I think realistically, again, if we got 300 people here, that would just be a smashing success. Intent, I think, is not to exclude anyone who wants to appear and watch the presentation.
And then will folks have to RSVP or purchase tickets? Or how are we gonna know that people we've invited are gonna come?
I'm envisioning a free event, and, you know, yes, there would be some sort of RSVPs to try to get as much participation as we can. I feel like invitations and RSVPs would just encourage, I think, more participation and engagement and attendance.
And then you talked about sponsorship? You mentioned Museum of Outdoor Arts. Have you talked to them already about sponsorship?
No, I guess, you know, I was just viewing them as a partner, you know, in hosting the event, that they would help us host the event and, and agree to keep the museum open perhaps that night. I believe staff has made some contact. Mr. Robinson, can you describe your interaction with MOA on this issue?
I'm gonna defer to the city manager.
Thank you.
Actually, I did meet...
I didn't know who made that call.
Yeah, sorry, mayor, I did, and council, I did meet with Cynthia Madden-Lightner. We meet on a quarterly basis and proposed the date that you had proposed to us, of the February 22nd date, and, and she indicated that she'd be more than happy to have the museum open that evening for this particular event, just so that people can come and see their new exhibit, the Luminos exhibit that's coming up, the art, art of light or light of art. Forget the name exactly, but that exhibit would be open during that time.
Thank you. So I don't view this as their sponsorship. I view this as a promotional event for them as well.
Okay, but you did mention sponsorship. Do you have other sponsors in mind?
Yeah, the only sponsors I really had in mind would be the folks who were giving food away in the second, you know, to give away some finger foods and samples. So I was just envisioning about four restaurants to highlight locally that could be giving away food and be also considered sponsors of the event, not to, you know, mess up what we're trying to do with long-term annual sponsorships. Again, this is, in my mind, is just kind of a one-off, just to try to get some food and keep the cost of the event low.
And what would the four restaurants be?
I've, I have some ideas. No, Twin Dragon would definitely, in my mind, I don't think Twin Dragon makes sense. You know, I just don't want this to be viewed as a promotional event for my private business. Twin Dragon's on deck. If we can't find food, though, I'm happy to provide food for the event. However, in my mind, some of the higher-visibility, smaller individual restaurants in my mind were Calore, Mo's, Acres, help me out. We had another one in mind. Indici, Steakhouse Tenor, Indici, and Copper Pot, I think, was the other one that we were thinking about. Of course, you know, this is, you know, in conjunction with them, we're looking for people to be willing to give away some food in, in exchange for a little marketing that night.
Okay. I just think we still have a lot of unanswered questions, and I think we'd really benefit from a study session.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I would like to make a motion that we take the contract and the state-of-the-city into, to table it and to have a study session.
A second.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
So we're talking about the motion on the floor right now?
I suppose you can go in that direction.
Sounds like it, right? Because we had two. Okay, so I will address that. I, my, my concern tonight isn't necessarily with the budget. I think what's happened is that in the vacuum of a position that, I mean, we've had a vacated position, the communication department has been consolidated in some really, I think, thoughtful ways. So, so now we're in a place where we can hire an organization that can help us with the next stage. This is the first time we've ever really analyzed anything that goes on in communication, so you can open a can of worms probably by this. Yeah, Doug knows. So pardon us in our own internal work here, but we've never done this before. We've never looked at every little thing communication folks did before, and you've opened it up in a way that lets us to give input in a way we haven't had before. Although I've never, I mean, in the seven years I've been on, I've never seen a communication department come up with events and run with them or things like that. them or things like that. That's what my questions were about, is how will we give input to those? Cause usually they're driven by us and then you carry them out. Now it looks like we're looking to some experts to help us think bigger than maybe what we've thought of before. And so that, that would be the reason why I'd say let's hold off on this voting on it tonight and do a study session so we do it right. Because we've never done this like this before. And I think, I think Slate's a outstanding organization to go with. I have no question about you choosing them, given the background that they've had with us already. I know that there are others that may not feel that way though too. So I would, for that reason alone, then give another opportunity for you to be with us for an evening, do a Slate kind of conversation about what you learned about us, about what you think would work here. And I'm assuming that this was a co-written contract, right? Sort of, I don't know who put it, no, you guys got it from us and then signed it, or?
Right, me and Tom Nelson.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, I'm asking a question now that I should've asked earlier. But anyway, because of that, you know, we're attributing some things to you and maybe it isn't, and maybe it's us internally. And you couldn't anticipate all the questions we would have either. So I think, I think this kind of stuff for future is just a good example for those of you putting, well, we're gonna do this together in the future, right? We just think through a little bit more so we're not at a decision-making point in a regular meeting on this. I think this kind of stuff is big enough to bring to a study session first, rather than just appear here and rake you over the coals in the process. And so that, I think for that alone, I wanna, I just wanna say it's not the budget necessarily about it, it's how it's put together and it's all kinds of new things we haven't thought about before. And I don't even have trouble with the 5,000 for some event with the state of the city, which might need to be renamed. The mayor state of the city, which is on your night for your constituents, but just broader, and you're inviting other people into it, which is not what I agreed, not what I thought a state of the city was gonna be at all. That's not what I thought we were, there was no question we all agreed to do that in the goal setting. I just had a different idea of what it would be. So I would love to see it move and I will vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
We're actually talking about related subjects, but two different subjects here. And if it's okay with Rita, I'd kinda like to amend her motion and have us make a statement, you know, or make a vote as to going into a study session for the contract and a separate consensus about the state of the city. Cause we're kinda mixing two different subjects at one time. We need to get some clarity on this. If that's okay with you, Rita.
My initial thought is that they would come forward together if we decided to do that, you know, they could be separate.
I, I think these are two totally different things. Cause it's not a contract with them.
Except, okay.
It is. That's part of the contract.
Can I respond?
Councilmember Russell, please.
I really don't want my motion amended because they are tied together in the contract. So I think let's deal with it this way and then when we get to the study session, it could change.
Okay. Councilmember Olson?
So then I want it to be, I, I don't mind doing that at all. It makes it simpler for all of us. But I do want a separate conversation about the state of the city event. Not have it, if we've decided that yes, we like the contract, then what does that event look like? And is it gonna be a one person deciding that this is my thing and this is what I wanna do when we come to it? That's one thing. And if it's something else, then we come, but we come to some consensus on it. Because the last thing we wanna do is if we, if this event goes through is have it be a flop. I want it to do well. I mean, otherwise, well, maybe some people say, well, that is the state of the city. And I don't want that to be said.
Councilmember Berentone?
I agree. There are other issues that are brought up with the contract that I would like to have, have them address. And I think from all of their bobble-headed over there, they have answers. And I would like to hear a little bit more. We tried this with Kahoots. We spent $47,000 and I would like to have more information about what happened, what went wrong, what was right with them, what the foundation is that we're building on from what product they have that's useful, and how we're moving forward. I don't think that's unreasonable. So I wanna do it on the whole contract, but I do agree and would like to have it on the same night to get a little bit more clarity on exactly so everybody knows, has the same vision that the mayor has on what the state of the city address is gonna be. So if we could at least have it at the same time, it would be great. I don't mind breaking it out because it is listed as a separate event, any more than I would expect that they would have information, more information, more historical information on the 4th of July event, so that we're not talking anecdotally and somebody just going, here's what we spent. Then we do that too much. Oh no, here's, we just, we usually spend 10,000. I would like some documentation for us to see what's going on so that we're not just doing things like that. And that we have the documentation to back up the decisions we're making because that's historically what we did, then that would be nice. So if we could just do it at the same time, that would be great.
Thank you. I am hearing some, you know, desire, I think, to move this. We do have a motion on the table to table this. I believe to a date certain, that'd be two weeks from tonight. Councilmember Russell, can I get some clarity on when you'd like to table this to?
Will we have a study session up to that?
I guess that's, you know, a question. So, you know, you know, bringing to my other issue, which is, you know, we can look at the agenda here at the end, but is it possible to get them in next week? Is it possible to get them in two weeks from today? Is it possible to do a special meeting? Can you give me some idea of what scheduling possibilities we have here?
Yes, mayor, next Monday night, you have, and we need to talk about this later too, you have a, a study session to actually interview board and commission applicants. Right now you have over 30, which is going to be 300 minutes or more, 300 minutes plus. So that's gonna be an issue. But the next study session that you have, actually, we do have on January 23rd, an item called Communications Plan Status Update. And that was a kinda talk about what we're doing after the contract. So since we now have a contract, you can use that time now to study this particular item. So the 23rd would be the next nearest opportunity for you to have this discussion about taking the Kahoots blueprint, which Slate is, and, and working on it.
Is it possible we could be provided with that Kahoots blueprint? Cause I looked into my eyes but we didn't actually ever have that.
Yeah, it was provided, council, but we can resend that back out.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we could get them scheduled, Slate to reappear on the 23rd, then we could potentially move back forward then with this issue in our first meeting in February. I apologize what date that would be. I don't have it in front of me.
Your first meeting in February would be, study session would be?
Six.
February 6th. Actually, that's a regular meeting. Your study session would be February 13th, which is already pretty full of some items that are kind of timely, including historic preservation ordinance, strategic plan update, and you're starting PBB budget review that month.
Can I clarify what you asked? I thought you were saying that we would bring it to the study session on the 23rd, and then we would bring it to the next potentially?
Oh, for approval? Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's what I, that's what I.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Though I'm glad we're full up for that day.
And so when would, and so when would the first opportunity for approval then be again, so that we can know when to table this to?
February 6th. February 6th. Study on the 23rd of January, your first opportunity for approval is February 6th.
Is the 30th off or is the 16th off?
No meeting on the 30th. That's the fifth Monday.
And then on the 16th, do we have it on the 17th?
Yes, that's correct. January 17th is your meeting because January 16th is.
Martin Luther King's, Martin Luther King.
Holiday.
No.
No. Martin Luther King.
Great. You know, Councilmember Russell, did you have something here?
Oh, no, just.
I was just going to, you know, generally voice my support for the motion to table it for a date certain, the first meeting in February. We can have a study session as we just described. You know, my only concern, again, I guess, was with the timeline that I sort of brought up. You know, in my mind, a February 22nd date might not be ideal, given the timeline we just discussed. Again, in my mind, the, you know, really the absolute latest date that I could really see this pushing towards would be the tail end of March. And I still think that that would be potentially doable if we were able to approve this on February 3rd. And so in my mind, as long as we're productive in this study session and get all of our questions answered and get feedback, I think we're okay. I feel like if folks want a more engaged process, I'd like to recommend a subcommittee or a special meeting and get any feedback on that. Councilmember Martinez?
Oh, I just wanted to ask that this outline you shared be shared with us electronically as well.
Sure. Can you help me with that, Mr. Keck? Thank you. I did have one question and that was for Councilmember Olson, you know, you said that, you know, you didn't think it would be state of the city by the mayor. Who, what did you expect? Or maybe that would be helpful for me to understand kinda where you're coming from, as far as, you know, what, if you didn't think it was gonna be the mayor, who did you think it would be?
I'm sorry. We've never had a mayor-centric kind of event, really. That's what this is about for me. And so whether it's in March or April or May, I don't even see that being a big issue. But it is to you somehow related to elections, which don't even, people don't declare it till August. I, I think there's a lot of time to plan something and make it truly inclusive with everybody here. And I think there could be a number of department heads that could be very, very good at being some of the presenters. It sounds to me, and I, I don't know, but looking at this, it sounds like you're planning to be sort of the guy who speaks all night long and tells everything. And I don't see or hear any interactive work or, which I think is unfortunate. That's not the way I would have thought we would go at this. So it's very, it's a very one-person show and that's not the way I like to see us do things. It wouldn't be my choice at all. So.
Thank you. That was helpful. Councilmember Yates?
I don't think we should set a date or anything along that until we actually have a discussion and study session. There's a lot of things that needs to happen. And if we're, if we don't have an agreement among council to do this, it's a lot of wasted time for staff, a lot of wasted time for everyone. So I think, let's not put the cart in front of the horse. Let's have our study session. And then we can set that date. And if it happens in the spring, it happens in the spring. I'd rather have it done correctly and make sure that it's a success than just try to push it forward for the sake of pushing it forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
It was my understanding that we were setting a, a study session for this contract and then going ahead and setting the next possible date, that we could go ahead and either approve or not approve this contract. That's all. Not a, not a date for the mayor's event or anything else. That's just where we're at right now.
Again, I was just making some comments as far as timeline. We do have a motion on the table. Any further comments regarding the motion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11C4, which was the consent agenda item, 9C2, Littleton-Inglewood, I'm sorry, the Inglewood-Littleton wastewater treatment plant supervisory committee recommends council approve by motion a contract for biogas use application feasibility study at Littleton-Inglewood wastewater treatment plant. Staff is recommending an award of contract at the engineering consulting firm, Carlo Engineers, Inc., in the amount of $61,500. Our staff sources Inglewood-Littleton wastewater treatment project engineer, Gunter Ritter. Do we have anybody here? Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Since this is consent agenda, I guess I would just open it up for questions. If council has specific questions for staff on this issue. Councilmember Berentone?
I'm not an expert in this, but in asking some people, and unfortunately, because of the way that this got brought forward, and I don't get it till late on Thursday, and I worked very late on Thursday. So then the offices were closed Friday and the offices were closed Monday and I really, so it may not be as fair, it was just not very timely for me to get answers to these questions. And so there are a series of five questions that I worked out in discussing this with some people, and I would need to have them answered before I could do this. The first one is what volume of gas is flared? Cause what we're trying to find out is whether this is really a feasible thing to do, whether it's really cost-effective to do, even to do the study. I mean, apparently there are a few, some foundational information that we could find out that would already make us understand whether this is even worth going down this rabbit trail. So are you the person that I would ask them of, or?
You can, you can ask me any specific question if you like.
Okay, what volume of gas is flared? The burn off to the atmosphere in a typical month?
Do you mean the amount of BTUs or the gas volume that's being flared?
For the, for this biogas, yes, that you're just, you're trying to make a decision, we're trying to make a decision on whether to do this study. And the feasibility study would be to accomplish what? We're, we're asking for a study because we wanna be able to do what in the end?
We want to be able to have a third-party feasibility analysis that will show to us whether or not the actual project of a biogas use implementation project will be fiscal, technically, possible.
Right. So in, in that end, what, what was brought back to me is what volume of gas are we, are we burning off in a typical month? What volume of gas is used in a typical month to heat the anaerobic digester and what generation generates both the heating and the gas being flared? Because if it takes so much to do the initial kick-up of the anaerobic digester and you use it all, then what's the point of going down this path? What is the typical component analysis of these two gas streams? What quantity of natural gas is currently used for typical month in any other plant operations, both treatment units and in heating plant buildings? And what quantities of liquid fuels, gasoline and diesel propane or any, are used in a typical month for the plant operations and currently now? And I have to admit that a lot of this may have gone over my head, but I was grateful to have somebody who's a Colorado engineer, professional, civil engineering, and the study of emphasis was in water and wastewater engineering. And those were some of that conversation that went back and forth where I actually did start to understand, somewhat similar to solar field. If you have a solar field, you also have to have certain generators working all the time. Because if the sun goes behind a cloud, you still have to provide the service. So there's still a certain amount of energy that has to be committed to in order to have that. You can't have something that's just all solar all the time because that's not the way the world works. So, and they're explaining it to me, it did make sense to ask, have some of these questions answered prior to.
Yeah, Councilmember Berentone, these are all really interesting questions. I'd love to spend a lot of time on all of those. Can you go down with the first question and I address all of those?
Sure.
The first one, I believe, was what our gas.
What the volume of gas is, what volume of gas is flared, burnt off to the atmosphere in a typical month?
The, the number that I have here is 451,312 cubic feet per day. And then I'm, I'm not able to convert this into another unit right now, but this is the volume that I have.
Okay.
Of this gas, 30% is currently used to heat our anaerobic digesters so that the bacteria can actually do their digestion effort at their optimum, so to speak. 70% of the digester gas that we are producing is being flared currently. And of that digester gas, 60% is maintained, which is the same maintained that is natural gas, same BTU content, so to speak. 40% are other gases like CO2, H2S, and so on. So if cleaned up to maintain, this gas can be used as renewable energy source. I think that addresses your first question.
Renewable, but it can be used as an energy source because it's coming out of there. But if it takes so much, I'm not sure that the study is necessary in that piece of it until I have the answers to these questions. And then I would, I kinda would need these questions answered so that I could go ahead and take them back, have that discussion again, and see whether this is even something that we should be doing, so.
The consultant that will do the feasibility analysis will review all of these.
But if the answer to these five questions would, would make somebody able to convince me that the study isn't necessary, because we would never be able to really have this work in a way of, to provide enough for this anaerobic digester, then it would be silly to spend the money. So I'm kind of looking for the answer to these five questions before I feel comfortable to even vote on this.
All right. I believe two of those I have addressed.
Oh, no, I, I understand, but it's the combination of that information and then my being able to take that back and have the conversations.
Thank you. Can we move on to Councilmember Olson's questions?
I guess I actually have a question now for Councilmember Berentone. Could you tell us who the expert is that you're using to decide your vote on this?
I'm not using it to decide the vote.
Or the five questions that someone posed to you in an email or something?
They are Pat Fitzgerald, they're a Colorado Registered Professional Engineer, number 19656. He's a BS in Civil Engineering, University of Colorado, with his study emphasis in water and wastewater engineering. He's a resident of Littleton and several of the people, a couple of them are ex-Martin people, have become interested because we are, this is Bi-City's plant. And so I regularly share information with any citizens, a couple of them in Inglewood as well, that have some higher level of expertise in water and wastewater management than I do. And so I give them information and say, here's kind of what we're doing. And then sometimes they have feedback and say, wait, we really don't think that this is a good thing for you to do this study because if the gas is already so low, you would already know and it would kind of make it silly. Then I said, okay, I will ask these five questions and see if I can get some more information. Because they convinced me enough that the questions were necessary to make a good stewardship answer on this study.
So I, thank you. That's helpful to know. I, I don't have any other questions, I guess, for you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion?
I'd like to move to, move agenda item 9C2 for biogas use application feasibility.
Yeah, it was 9C3, but now it's, yeah.
Oh, now it's 11C4.
11C4, yeah, thank you. So we know what you're moving to approve.
11C4, sorry. I'm looking at the actual.
Second, thank you. Further discussion? I appreciate Councilmember Olson. Sorry, Councilmember Olson, did you have?
I thought you said Russell.
Olson.
I'm, while I think it's helpful to get other people's perspectives, I would like this to be done in a way that if we were to have another, an engineer that they work with you directly and not sort of roundabout in between. So I, I have to trust that the engineers here are doing what they need to do and have all the information that they needed.
I will again apologize for that because we, we got it late Thursday. The offices were closed Friday and they were closed yesterday. So I don't, I would have normally tried to have gotten these answered before this meeting today, but that wasn't possible to do in a timely manner when, the way that we get our information.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson, I apologize. Anything else there?
No.
Thank you. You know, I, I am going to support this. I appreciate some of the concerns brought up by Councilmember Berentone. I do trust that our staff thinks that this is feasible and makes some general sense. I guess I would ask them again. I guess I would ask them again to make sure that that makes sense before the execution of this, but, you know, assuming that you make, you think that there's some feasible possibility here that we pursue that. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Wait, you gonna say something?
Oh, did you have something else?
If you had asked me for any further comments, and I, I can state that we believe that this feasibility analysis is not in vain.
Thank you, sir. I know this is something we've been talking about for a while, of trying to capture some of this. Seeing no further comments, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show four ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berentine.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for sticking around. Moving on to agenda item 12, general discussion. I would like to start off with councilmember's choice. Would anybody like to kick us off? We do have one resolution approving our funding for aid to other agencies under 12B1, so anybody would like to move that, please do so during your, your member time. Councilmember Russell, would you mind if I started with you?
No, that's fine. I'm just trying to remember what I said or find what I wrote down. Actually, I do remember now. It was one thing that Mr. Keck shared, that there's 30 people already applied. I would like to end at 10 o'clock at night. It's not good to bring people in after 10 o'clock to interview, and so I believe that we would need to schedule probably more than, than one night. Is that correct? So that's, I think we need to deal with that.
And I'll bring that back up under mayor choice for scheduling issues.
Okay, all right, perfect. And the other thing is, can we get an update on the IBAC license revocation?
They're, they appealed it, the cease and desist order, under their, under our ordinances. We have a hearing scheduled for, give me one moment, January 27th, I believe? At 9:00 AM. Let me double check. Yes, January 23rd at 9:00 AM, excuse me.
And who hears those?
That would be Kathleen Wrinkle. She is the licensing officer, as set forth in our ordinances.
And, so that's typical?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's where we are at this point.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
How long does she have to make a decision?
I believe it's 14 days after the hearing.
Okay. And other than that, I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and it's good to be back.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
Well, just Happy New Year to everybody. I believe that now that city manager has said that there's 30 people applying, I do want to have that discussion, so I'll wait till we do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I wanted to make a comment, you know, I came in a little bit late, but I heard some of it, the interference of, of council with city directors, and I, I don't even remember at this point who made the comment that, maybe it was you, Councilmember Berentine, but when I served under our past city manager, it was really strict about who we should and shouldn't talk to. We had very clear agreement that we never talked to any directors without the city manager knowing about it, or at least letting them know we're going to call them. So I have felt like it's been way more open with you currently, manager Keck, and that if, if that kind of openness is, is continuing to be problematic, that's, that really worries me, because you've been incredibly open and warm and welcoming to people. And perhaps that's also gotten, gotten you into a lot of meetings, or, and also directors feeling like they need to entertain lots of different questions from people. And I, I do hope we can get to the bottom of that. I don't want anyone to be feeling like they're under attack by any of us, or feeling like there's any ill will from anyone to another within the directors based on relationships with any of us. So it would be great to, to figure that one out further. But welcome to 2017.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
This is a kind of a tongue-in-cheek type of comment, but also, as I started thinking about it, it might be a little fun. In the last council meeting, there was a statement about the city manager supposed to be responsible for the airport. And I started thinking about Parks and Rec and, and everything, and actually, we do have land, I don't know if it's feasible or not, to do a RC airport. You know, I'm not seriously saying that Eric should manage that, but, you know, if Parks and Rec would entertain the thought at least, and see if that's an area where people can fly their drones and fly their RC airplanes, it might be another nice activity brought into our city. I am thankful 2016 is over with, and I am excited for this next year, and I'd like to see council move forward in a very positive and just a positive direction. Happy New Year to everyone.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, I would echo that. Happy New Year and look forward to serving the city in 2017. I guess since I'm last in the list, I will make a motion to approve the 2017 funding for the local nonprofits.
Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Councilmember Russell?
I just want to share that I will be voting no. Not that I don't think that all of these agencies are worthy of the support, I just don't think it is the position of government to support nonprofit organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I'm a little concerned about the timing on how all of this went, went down, and going from a study session and then not having that same kind of discussion, although I originally thought that we had the discussion at council, and then we remembered we had the study session in here. And so we didn't, it, it wasn't a vote, and so that's concerning. It should have been, that discussion that happened should have been more of a formal council discussion on all of these agencies. I, I have never agreed, never, in the 20 years that I have been working on stuff in this community, ever agreed to the aid to other agencies. We shouldn't be doing that. I don't think that we should be doling out taxpayer monies and picking winners and losers amongst the nonprofits. I was concerned, but did listen again to the tape, and it does have the 2,500, where the, the remainder then becomes this council discretionary thing. I think that that ought to be taken away. If you're going to go ahead and make a decision about what you're spending this money on, then that's what should be in the budget, not just the 20,000. And if you don't dole it all out, then the rest of it becomes some kind of thing that can be used at council's discretion in the middle of the year. Either agree, put it in the budget, and that's what it is, or not. So I disagree with the 2,500, you know, not being taken out, but it is what it is. I don't agree with any of the money being spent the way it is. And no change there, so just more official saying of it.
Thank you. You know, I am supportive of aid to other agencies. You know, this is a pot of money that has really dwindled since my time on council. You know, I do view this as our social services arm, if you will. You know, obviously, here in the city of Inglewood, we do not have the budget for, to provide social services to our residents. So we're looking, I think, to plug that gap with nonprofits. And, you know, most of this stuff is for food outreach, other, you know, sort of basic social services. And again, I'm relatively comfortable that that's been a lowering amount, but I, again, I am supportive of the consensus of council that we gathered last year. Anybody else with any comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show four ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berentine.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez, back to you.
That's all for me.
Thank you. Moving on to mayor's choice, I guess I would like to go over the agenda. You know, I did, I was kind of expecting us to have some agenda items in here as far as our next study sessions and future study session topics, just for our general discussion. You know, I know that we, at our last mayor-manager meeting, were able to set several meetings forward because of the interviews and things. So just moving forward, though, starting maybe next week, can we get, make sure we get that information so that council can have a more robust conversation about scheduling?
Yeah, certainly, Mayor. And again, we're still trying to get used to this new method of doing this. Obviously, the one area in which we would really appreciate the input from the city council would be the study sessions. Obviously, from a business meeting perspective, such as a night, the first and third Mondays, or Tuesday, albeit today, that largely needs to be driven by staff, otherwise we would then be really bogged down from an operational standpoint, but apologize for that. Just quickly, then, next, next Monday, as you've enunciated, is the board and commission interviews, and as we stated, we have over 30 applicants. We've made calls out to all the individuals and scheduled people thus far between 6:00 and 10:00 PM. However, we have several callbacks that we need to make to make sure that people get back into the, into a groove. And so one of the questions we have tonight, which Councilmember Russell brought up aptly, was, we believe too that scheduling people at 10:00 PM is, could be onerous. However, that would then necessitate a secondary night, and we would like to get some sort of consensus or a motion this evening to establish a secondary date for the interviews, whether that be next Tuesday or some other date next week that, that would work for the city council.
Thank you. I believe the other, you know, perhaps all their alternative, and others can weigh in on this, is, you know, we could start earlier in the day. We could start at 5:00 PM, for example, and try to knock them out on that one date. Councilmembers like to weigh in. Councilmember Martinez?
I agree. I think we should split it up in two days. I know I've only been part of one of these sessions, and it was really long, and I feel like it's only fair to the folks who want to be volunteer with us, that we give them the best of us and we get the best of them. So we don't ask them to show up at, you know, 9:30 expecting them to be their best, and same with us. So I would prefer to break it into two segments.
Thank you. What would be the suggested dates? I assume that week. Is there any dates that work for you during that week?
I'd have to look.
No problem. I'll move on. I'll come back to you. Trying to get some dates. Councilmember Yates?
Our last, our last interview session was grueling, and it went way too long. It was truly unfair to the members who interviewed, and frankly, I don't think we can make good decisions when we're sitting in there for four hours. It's been a long day to begin with. I'm, I'm sure many of us have jobs and stuff like that that we're filling. So I think it's in the best interest for the community that we break this into two evenings. Now, you'll probably ask me exactly which two evenings. That I can't answer, but I'm fairly flexible on that issue. So, there you go.
Thank you. Others want to weigh in on this? Councilmember Olson?
I, I was wondering if maybe we could start early on the ninth and do all of the interviews, and then come back on the 10th and make the decisions. Might be that, I think once we've done the interviews, it's like we're not, we don't do well when we're that tired in making decisions. So maybe just, I don't know, if you've scheduled, scheduled them all the way up to 10 already, you hate to go back and tell them, I'm not going to do it. And, I mean, do you think?
I'll, we'll do whatever the council.
Or we split it. I, I, unfortunately, I mean, I'm fine with you guys deciding if it needs to be, unfortunately, next week, the 11th and the 12th, and are both busy in the evenings, unless I didn't go to the Parks and Rec.
Unfortunately, I've got water, we've got water and sewer on Tuesday.
Oh, yeah.
I have KEB and library on Tuesday.
Okay, great. So Tuesday's pretty out. Urban renewal's Wednesday. Thursday and Friday I'm open. I do agree, thank you for bringing that up, though, that, you know, some of these, the decision point is kind of a totally separate thing. And so if we do separate it into two nights, I would prefer to do more interviews on the first night, that way we could leave some more time for discussion and, and some consensus at the end. Councilmember Berentine?
I really think that we, how did you schedule these guys? You just took everybody from 6:00 until 10:00 and just get allotted them the time that would fit 30 people in that four hours, or three hours?
Actually, yeah, six, six to 10, four hours, but we, we have other persons who we've made contact with via telephone. Mary Jackson, our secretary, has called, and there were people who haven't called back to say, hey, I'll take such and such a time, or whatever times are left. So we, right now, the reason I'm raising this is because we're, we're pressed for time, knowing again that council typically meets between 6:00 and 10:00. We were going to either go longer, or, as has been suggested, to have another night to do this. So we still have individuals who haven't called us back to fill, fill a slot yet.
And you've still got them slated for the 10-minute interview time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So you're, the way that you were doing it was just, however many people, that's the four hours, and you were going to do that. I don't think that starting earlier, that we are any better at five hours of working than we are at four. And I think that it's inappropriate to ask people to come and interview past 9:00. I think that's, I think that's disrespectful.
We've done it for the seven years I've been on, I think it's nuts all the time. Let alone make a decision after.
I, I think whether we're going to have four or five people between 9:00 and 10:00, and then, if we're going to move it to a second night, then I think we ought to be respectful of people, and maybe we should stop a series of doing this in some crazy fashion and make it more reasonable. I don't think we should be interviewing people past 9:00. We always go late, and I don't think it should be earlier. I think we should just put it to more, to more days. I mean, these people serve an important function in our city. We shouldn't act like we're just running them through like cattle.
Thank you. Do you have any suggested dates for the second date?
The, the very next day would be fine with me. Whatever y'all decide, I'll do that. What I don't want to do is make it a longer night just for the sake of getting it done. That's not what the purpose of this is. These boards and commissions serve an important function in the city, and I want it to be respectful and thoughtful.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I mean, I am available Tuesday. I would also be available Thursday. Thursday would work for me. I'm wondering if we decide that we're, whatever night we're going to do it, if the people that you already have scheduled from 9:00 to 10:00 could be offered time on the other day?
We can certainly do that. At this point in time, obviously, the math says you're going to need five hours plus. So we can go back to those who are scheduled between 9:00 and 10:00 on next Monday, which I think we have several people that we can get back to them and see if we can move them to an alternative date next week.
But it's also possible that we would get more applications by Friday, right?
It's, that's true. Some people can still dribble in, but we think the majority of, that has almost come to a halt.
Okay.
But it's still not closed yet?
It is not closed till Friday, that's correct.
What a wonderful problem. I think we've heard Thursday is a possibility, Tuesday is a possibility. Again, Tuesday, you know, you guys would have to roll without me and Councilmember Yates and Mayor Protem, as we're all members of the Water and Sewer Board.
I'm available Thursday.
That's right. So I was saying Tuesday, and so Thursday, did that work with most?
I have Parks and Rec at 5:30, but they're often done early, so, well, depends on if we're doing.
Wednesday I have urban renewal, but that's something that's.
I can't do it.
You know, if everybody, that works with everybody else. So I'm hearing Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday as possibilities. Does anybody want to chime in on which works best, or which ones are unavailable?
I can do Thursday, not Friday. Friday MOA has an art opening that I would love to go to.
Okay. And so you like Thursday? Does everybody like Thursday? Anybody have a problem with Thursday? Why don't we start there?
I'll just come late.
Does Wednesday work for you?
No.
Is Wednesday better?
No, Thursday's fine, I'll just.
So it sounds like Thursday might be our best bet. Is that an also six start, or maybe can we start a few minutes early on the ninth? Can you, can we agree to 5:30 maybe? Can folks make it on the ninth on 5:30?
What I would prefer is to have like an earlier start and have a little bit more breaks, or fresh-minded, too, but I, I can start earlier, 5:30.
Agreed. I was thinking 5:30 on both dates, if possible.
Well, I, Thursday I'll be at Parks and Rec, unless you don't, you don't want to go.
Is that 5:30 to nine, or 5:30 to 10? 5:30 to nine, right? Nine? Okay.
5:30 to nine, and then give us three and a half hours on each night, so that'd probably be adequate.
We, we can make that happen. I'll just have to juggle back or go follow back up with those people who have been scheduled between 9:00 and 10:00 on the ninth.
I don't.
See if they can come in maybe a little earlier than on either the ninth or then the Thursday.
I have one other.
Go ahead, Councilmember Berentine.
I had some concerns about with our new system and everything, and I appreciate it. I think it's new, but some people brought up some questions, so I started going through all, each board. So, I started going through all, each board and there are some problems. There are some openings on boards that are not listed and there are some people who are listed in fourth terms. There are people who are listed in their 48th term, 36th term. And so, for an example, the Urban Renewal Authority with Ernie giving his application late, he is, there's an opening. It shows no opening, but it also shows Tom Burns is, he's term limited and his term is up in February of this year. So, there's actually two openings, an Urban Renewal Board where there wasn't before. So, I actually went through every single board and there's an issue, there's, there's some concerns. So, rather than go through each one of these and try and say, and I think some of it was just merely like a typo or something happened as they were trying to get all this information in, but there were some, if I could just maybe share this with whoever's doing that process and then maybe they could explain, some of the ones where the alternates being done until 2025, I think we should be keeping track of the terms of the alternates as well. And also, the policy, we're going to have to address the policy of people sitting on more than one board and how we're doing that because we have, we have, we said we wouldn't have people on more than one kind of board that's got autonomy there. And we've got quite a, we've got several people that are. And so, if we're going to have a policy, it's got to go, we've got to make sure that we're doing this consistently and for everybody, kind of like our, our stuff with following rules and policies and procedures for interference. We've got to make sure that that's for everybody across the board and not being subjective because I wasn't sure if you had heard some of the concerns, but those are things that are being brought up when the new city attorney comes. But if we could, if I could, if you could give me some direction after the meeting of who best to share this information with so that we have an accurate list of all of the openings that are available and what's going on so we don't, also so we don't have people thinking that they're going to just continue to serve when, when they're, when they're in a fourth term and violate that, the term limit thing. So, if we could do that off, off line, no, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other agenda-setting issues in your mind, Mr. Keck?
No, I'd just like to just enunciate again, then, the next meeting is a business meeting on the 17th. And then, the 23rd will be the next meeting and we'll have some of the topics that are, that are common to those, those meetings. And it'll be financial report. That financial report will also be, contain a review again of December of 2016 as well as, as well as, you know, review the end of the year from 2016. We have Board and Commission Appreciation Night Gift Discussion, which should be very brief that night. Citizen of the Year selection process. We went over this before, I think we talked to the council about a process for this, but I think at this point, we want to gain from councils a consensus of whether or not you want us to move forward with that proposed process. And as a review, just a quick review of that, it was, we have a process laid out. We wanted to know whether or not you want the citizens to go ahead and open up for nominations. The citizens were going to nominate an individual for Citizen of the Year and the council as a body would get together and review that and determine who they would want for that. That night also, we had a Communications Plan Status Update for 45 minutes, but now we're switching that to again, talk about the agreement, proposed agreement with Slate. Police Building Project Status Update, that was also scheduled for the 23rd and we're on schedule for that. Parks and Recreation Master Plan. As you recall, Dorothy Hargrove has had several open houses and had a, an open forum in early December. And now, she's bringing this back to the council for a brief discussion of some of the findings from that particular forum, as well as some recommendations from you as a body again, as to whether or not you want to see that brought forward for adoption. And lastly, that evening, again, a quick communications update, or we are calling it PIO update, where Allison's going to tell you of some of the upcoming events and meetings and dates of, of concern to the council and the community. So, that's, that's the 23rd.
Thank you. You know, hearing the, I think, expansion of the Communications Plan Status Update Conversation, I would suggest that that get extended, the additional 20 minutes perhaps, so that the rest of the agenda goes, flows till 9:00 is what I had. I apologize.
So, add the 20 minutes to that item. And you'll be done by 9:00.
Do you think that there's anything there that is not pressing, that could potentially be put to a different night?
Yes. Your Board and Commission Appreciation Gift Night can go into the future.
You guys okay with that? I'm going to suggest that that move to the next meeting to open up a little bit of time. No, I apologize. I'm happy to share.
Okay, I, no, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
No, no. This was, I just pulled this out of my bag of tricks from our last mayor manager meeting here, so apologize. You guys don't have the, the benefit of this. And again, hopefully, next week, we'll get on this new process and everybody will get a, get a version of this as well as that tentative future study session topic so we can look at sort of the laundry list of what's coming. But can you guys agree that we can bump then Board and Commission Appreciation Night Gift Discussion to the following study session?
I think so. I think we should reserve as much time as we can to discussing this communication plan because I think it's important and timely.
Anything else you think could be bumped to open up even more time?
What's our timeline for the Citizen of the Year selection? Can that be bumped too?
Here again, we're, I'm still relatively new, right? Just two years. So, I know that, well, it is. I mean, I'm still fighting a lot of inertia here with, with the way things have always been done. And the way things have always been done in the past, prior to, I guess, me coming because you haven't done a Citizen of the Year since I've come, was that you had a process and someone was selected around the city's birthday, which happens to be my birthday too, so don't ever forget it. May 13th of...
What a coinkydink.
Yeah, exactly. So, May 13th is typically around the time where you'd have some sort of ceremony to acknowledge that person.
I will say, we only slated it for about 15 minutes. I, I don't think we were anticipating a huge, robust conversation around it. Is your thought, because we were trying to meet, greet the anniversary and his birthday to try to, because that, it really did coincide really well with the, the anniversary of the city. You know, police building is, is really important. Park and Rec Master Plan, I don't really want to delay that. I, I will say that, you know, we have slated 30 minutes for that. That might not take that long. Could take longer, I suppose. I guess I'm comfortable with where we're at. Does anybody else want to make any other suggestions? Thank you. I, I will suggest one other thing. I apologize. Did you have something?
No.
Okay, I apologize. I did also just want to maybe highlight that I feel like, you know, the policy of, the new policy of an agenda setting should probably memorialize in some regard. I believe it's our policy and procedures that's the guiding light for that policy, language for that policy. And so, I think that we can take that issue up. I, I will suggest though, in the interim, that from tonight until next Monday, sometimes things change. And that if the city manager wishes to change the agenda between now and our next meeting, that he get the approval of the mayor. Would be my suggestion. Mayor and Mayor Protem perhaps. But that way, there's still some accountability with the electeds rather than turning over the issue of agenda setting totally to the discretion of staff. Not because I don't think that they know what they're doing or that they're going to try to sneak something in or something, but again, I just think that, that accountability makes sense to remain with, with the electeds. Councilmember Olson?
So, I think you were, you were holding up the policy.
Yeah, this policy manual needs an updating and I think everyone on council acknowledges that. You know, if you were to look at this, actually, it does state that the city manager is responsible for setting the agenda. However, I'm more than happy to, to work directly with council to make, make that happen.
Is that true? I, I believe the authority rests with Mayor and Mayor Protem, if I'm not mistaken.
It's in the policy procedure manual, sir. I didn't bring my highlighted copy so I remember what page it was on, but it basically says, because I've been reviewing this with our, our acting city clerk and we've talked about that a lot. But listen, we'll make this happen wherever you want to, but I, I do, I do not disagree that having some consultation with council on this is important so that you do know what's coming forward and can help.
I guess I just, I guess I just want to be clear in the interim, until we have an opportunity to review and, and approve a new policy, that we have some agreement that that's how these things should be working. Again, I, you know, I don't think we've had any major issues with our agenda recently, so I'm not viewing this as a major issue. But, you know, speaking with some other municipalities who have a similar system, they advise this and I think it's prudent. Councilmember Olson?
I wasn't really done, so that's why I pushed him. And I had asked him for some information, but anyway. So, I, I actually, I had read that too and I don't have any trouble with that. I think my big, my big concern is that if you're going to come back to the mayor, come back to the Protem too, so that there's two different folks giving you inputs, you don't get, you know, sort of like, and then also, I, I really do think, I, I mean, we've had things come up in study sessions that are, you know, police related or some kind of emergency that definitely has to be brought up, that can't go into the packet on Thursday. But if there's something where we're going to have a conversation about something, where we're making decisions or trying to come up with some, you know, direction for you, I would certainly not want it to pop in after Thursday when everything goes out to the public. So, and I know you agree to that too. I'm just reiterating what we practice.
Councilmember Berentone?
You're right. Policies and procedures need to be updated because we want to make sure that they're in line with the charter and our ordinances too. And certainly, history and tradition has had the mayor and Mayor Protem setting this forever. So, I, I don't think the policy was written to exclude council out of that agenda-setting piece of it either, but we'll be looking at that. The issue has always been one of transparency. What goes into that packet is what the public understands. If this isn't just about council and what we're, what we're doing, it gives the public an opportunity to address anything that may be of interest to them so that it's in some kind of timely manner so that they have it as well. And when we put things in after those decisions have been made, then the public doesn't have as much notice. And then, we're, we're trying to get away certainly of handing anything out at council meetings because it's not fair to the public who we represent. That's my boss. And they want to know what we're going to be doing instead of them being surprised at a meeting and not having any information that it was even going to be discussed. So, while I agree there are emergency things that happen, I mean, the library blows up that day. Of course, you couldn't put it on our packet that it was going to blow up. I get that. But it has to be really kept to a minimum and it's not just for the convenience of council, it's so that the public has that information and we're transparent with it. So, I would agree with the mayor that we would have to have some kind of notice and I doubt it happens very much now. So, isn't that pretty much the way the policy is now? I mean, if you, you had to change something after Tuesday, didn't you just go let them know?
Yeah, we would work together.
Well, then...
And I just wanted to clarify that for council. Again, I don't think it's a major issue and I think as mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Olson mentioned, this should probably be running through the Mayor Protem too. So, can we all just agree that that's kind of the policy? If staff wants to add something, they get approval from the mayor and the Mayor Protem. Anything else on that for anybody? Appreciate that. I'll conclude my comments just by...
Could I, could I ask you to clarify one thing?
Please.
Did we decide on a, a date for the additional meeting for the boards and commissions? Did I miss that?
Thursday?
Thursday.
5:30 to 9:00.
Thanks.
And that will, excuse me, that will be in the city council conference room upstairs on the third floor.
Well, that's the 12th at 5:30. So, it's Monday at 5:30 to 9:00?
Yep.
And, and Thursday from 5:30 to 9:00?
That's correct, counselor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olson?
Well, what I was going to suggest a while back was, because some people are already scheduled, why not go from 5:30 to 9:30 and then do Thursday night? And our decision is going to be made Thursday night too, right? We're not just going to interview. We're going to make nice decisions that night.
We're going to gain consensus.
I would, I would like to get as many done as we can Monday night and then have enough time to make nice decisions without getting all riled on Thursday. But I, just another half hour and then in the future, let's, let's plan this way far ahead and get a couple of nights.
We did do another half hour. We did 5:30 to 9:00 instead of 6:00.
But it's still 5:30 to 9:30 would give us the four hours that we had by going to from 6:00 to 10:00.
Right. And I, and I still believe that, I agree with the 9:00. I still think going after 9:00 for the citizens is just inappropriate.